All right, I know some of the council members aren't here, but it is 4:35, so we'll get started. I'm gonna turn it over to Heather. We're gonna go with DPW first?
Yes, so tonight we're gonna start with DPW. Engineering is kind of in the mix of some of this stuff, but we can start on page 20. 20 starts with DPW administration. Not a lot of change here, other than a small change in salaries. I don't know, Dave, if there's anything you want to add. There's nothing really, anything out of the ordinary?
Nothing really, no.
Over page 20.
Where's the salaries on 58?
The salaries are on page 20. Nope.
Well, there's some on 20.
Nope, the salaries are on page, you might be right, might be 58.
Administration.
58.
58.
58.
That's where everything else was.
Oh, that, yeah. Okay, hearing no questions, we could turn to page 22. This is DPW Central Garage. You're gonna notice a little bit of a downtick here, and all this has to do with is every year there's bidding that goes on between DPW and sewer for jobs in different cost centers. That's all it is. I went over this a dozen times, right Dave?
Yes.
Because I didn't believe it was true, so.
What was the thing you didn't believe was true?
Um, that it went down.
Look which one went down?
Look at wages.
Wages went down?
Yes, and wages should have gone up, but that because one particular person is in a different cost center. So that's all that that is. Once again, as it relates to this, not a huge, not a huge change.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, and I know that I've asked you this question before Heather, but I'm looking at year-to-date.
Yes.
So it seems like this leg is way behind, given that we've now got 29 days to go for the end of the fiscal year. Is that just?
Well, okay, so this was two months worth, February and March that would go in there.
Okay.
Okay, one thing you're gonna notice, you're gonna notice as we get closer to the end of the year, Fire and DPW and CSEA all had retros during the middle of the year. All their salary line items will be over, and I will have to, I will have to put budget into them.
Okay.
Okay?
This is pretty.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any questions on DPW Central Garage? Okay, let's move on to page 34. 34, at the bottom is the sign shop. The only thing I want to make note here at the sign shop is on the next page, under Other Supplies. The mayor has requested that the sign shop take on a more, I don't know what the word would be, but a more aggressive street signs replacement. And so he has talked to Mark, and they came up with a number of 70,000 for supplies. May need more than that to do some of the things that we want to do. We're having stop signs being stolen.
So I was gonna say, by street signs, you mean, you mean the stop signs, the, I mean, the street signs, the wheel signs, all of it?
All, yeah, and you'll also see.
How's it going with the backlog of the perforated galvanized coats?
They're coming in now. I got like 20 now, but really, I'm waiting till the weather breaks before to do anything.
But I know you were back on that.
Yeah, ground sprays, I would imagine.
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm eating lots of signs.
Maybe, I know usually in the spring you'll straighten them out. They do get a little.
Or put new ones in, right, then they'll, when the frost comes out, they get crooked, yeah.
We completed a sign inventory last year, mainly street signs, stop signs, traffic, or speed limit signs. And we have quite a few deficient stop signs throughout the city that we're looking to fix. And also, you know, especially where we're doing new paving, we're trying to go back and put new signs up where the new paving's been done throughout the city.
Dress it up nicely.
Dress it all up, complete it, so it's completed look.
You know, related to that, this is something I talked to Chief Williams about once. Like, I'm Mike, so I live on Emerson, and there's like a, you know, neighborhood watch sign. There are no neighborhood watches, and the chief says there's no evidence that neighborhood watches, that those signs do much. They don't do, they don't have the deferment effect we might want them to have. I sort of think we ought to take them down.
Yeah, there's quite a few signs, we have a lot of what's called sign litter throughout the city.
Yes, right.
You know, we have neighborhood watch signs, we have a lot of children at play signs that have been up for 40 years.
The children are now.
The children are gone.
The children have children.
We went to class for that, and they said those children at play signs are the most useful, useless, useful signs, because they don't, they're not legislated, but people do notice them.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, I, the children at play, I don't mind those, I don't like the neighborhood watch signs. And maybe that's me, but I do think that they constitute kind of.
They're not legislated either.
Right.
And they're not legislated, so.
It's something we can take a look at.
Okay.
My question is, do we need another U?
No.
So it's not too much to handle?
I can handle it. I have a helper in the summer. I have the guy that can help me, but as far as that, I'm gonna get somebody that's gonna wanna come in my department and have me do all the work and just sit there and collect the pay, and that's just not me working. I'm better off the way we're doing it. I didn't mean to say no S's.
No, no, it's, you know, yeah, so it's mostly materials and stuff like that.
Right.
And the bucket truck, things like that.
It's a bitted position, so can't control who somebody might wanna come off on their shift that's really not interested in doing the job.
Oh.
But just to come off of the shift and come on days, it doesn't help somebody of them.
Right, because they could have more seniority than me, and if there's something, it comes up where there's an emergency, he would be the, or be the one to do it, and they won't have no how to do it. And then I would be in anyway, so it's just a double of the thing.
Training takes a while for almost everything there. Especially power.
Okay, next up is page 42, DPW Street Maintenance. Not really much of a change here. After, go ahead.
So is, where 55,000, Mike, how is, like, do we use up most of that? You don't use up most of that? This is the sidewalk.
No, so, this is a missed moment, because we also have money in CBBG, so we realize it seems to be allocation first.
If it's in the target area.
Right, right, right.
But, right, and as I actually just had the math, so most of it's, most of the city's in the target area. At the town of the city. So this is, this is the non-CBBG sidewalk fund.
Yep.
How much do we, how much should we use in CBBG, how much of that do we place?
I wanna say 50,000, 35 to 50, I don't remember the numbers. We have money left, so.
Right.
We roll it over year to year.
Okay, we got a technical missing in here.
Are these mostly, uh?
There's a child missing, I assume people saw this.
Are these mostly before we started?
Right.
Are the sidewalks in this program mostly like residential, or can commercial apply as well?
Mike, Mike, can, can commercial apply to sidewalks too?
Yes, maximum a thousand, I'm sorry.
Delvin.
Delvin.
Mm-hmm.
Maximum a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So should we, like, should we as individual district council people, or council people in general, be encouraging people to buy?
Yes, yes, and the mayor has.
Sidewalks are horrible shit.
We'd love it if we got more people to dip into.
We'd love it if we overspent it, because we find money somewhere else to put in the money.
Now, now, I'm glad you said that, because now I probably won't be here to see the matriculation of that 200,000. But as we've talked before, I'm very interested in seeing that sidewalks are, should be in some way part of paving, or however we can do it, that way 100% of certain sidewalks get done by the city. I mean, on, in Corn Hill, you know, in other places of the city, the sidewalks, you literally can't walk on them. And waiting for a tenant or landlord to put 50% of that in would never happen.
Well, the worst parts of the sidewalks are where we've torn down houses.
Right.
That's because we annihilate the sidewalks.
I don't have that problem. We don't have, I don't have sidewalks.
But I do think, I mean, I, I think that Delvin's right, that we should think of sidewalks as mass transportation.
A rebuild, and then we rebuild.
You do the curves, right?
Because then we have, we have to pull up the aprons, and we do the birds, a lot of times. Like, sign is we do all the sidewalks, but we did the majority of that.
Okay.
Because it's very expensive.
Right.
How do you, so, I think someone wanted to, he does.
We're mandated to do all the handicap corners. We're supposed to have them all done by 2025. It's not gonna happen, but at least we have a program. Sorry. So, I mean.
How's that going?
Mike, I'm gonna help you.
I got Mike here, hold on, Mike.
My left shoulder is shot, and I'm putting all the work on it. So anyway, so the handicap corner is your problem. Brian, depending on where his budget is up this year, is often maybe have some money just for handicap corners as well.
Okay, any more questions on DPW Street Maintenance? We also have on page 43, DPW Garage. This garage isn't fixed yet.
We're working on it.
Oh, we're, we did more all, the wall here.
Won't even recognize it where you are.
We did the east wall.
Lip, blew up.
We did the north.
We're doing aside over here.
Believe it or not, what they've done is real nice. It will be really nice when it's done.
So is this 30,000 a realistic number, given what we've seen in the past few years?
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually in there doing repairs. Part of this is actually, if you haven't seen it, we'll see it next year, is being reimbursed by FEMA as part of the 2019 Halloween storm. I think we have up to $375,000 we're gonna be able to draw down. So it's just actually leveraging what we borrowed last year, came to for borrowing for the wall. It's actually leveraging more, so we're doing more than what we originally planned. So that repair should come down, if you're actually repairing something, you know, if you're actually going to reconstruction, so.
I got a similar question, which is that the heat and electric service, you're budgeting the same for this year as we have here?
Okay, so this is the one thing, and I'm glad Mike is here.
This has been a huge gray area.
This is a huge gray area for this coming year, okay? At the same time, we did the street lighting, and, you know, we weren't having to pay any fees on those anymore. Mike did a realignment of our street lighting and all our electric bills, because we have, we also have solar credits for our, and so he went through and he did a realignment. This realignment, if you look at year-to-date and all the electrical accounts, they look extremely odd. You'll see very small amounts in some of them, and much higher amounts, if you go to the street lighting account per se, the big nut, you'll see actually more expense there and less expense everywhere else. So for 2023, I left everything exactly the same, because I'm not gonna know how it's gonna turn out until this year is over, until it gets canceled.
There's another part, there's another component that everybody kind of gets a little screwed up. So we did the solar farm, so the companies came, this company came in, and they built those three solar farms that were up north. So on one hand, we get all the credits for what the solar farm is making, which we take off of our electric accounts. But we did this on their dime, so they have to get paid. So on another hand, we pay them a payment, so the delta difference is over the course of a 25-year term, we're gonna see a few million dollar savings, but, you know, it's a wash, it's up and down. So I'm a little skeptical to just totally wipe it out until we get a little better handle of what it's gonna be.
Because we haven't had a great full year in.
And, and we wouldn't have been, when you decided to do this, why would it not have been better for us to simply buy the panels and put them up on our own buildings?
Oh my God, this is, well, first off, these are, these are huge fields, like you see, like up by the jail.
Yeah.
Jethro.
We never would have.
You could never get all that at Seahawk.
On our own buildings.
So, I mean, this is a really good deal for us to save overtime.
Right.
So.
Save, and save overtime, and then at some point, is it, we were just making mine?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, they estimated that we were gonna save about $3 million. That's the money for us, over the course of 25 years. It's not a lot every year. It's, it's over the whole, if you can look at the 25-year plan.
Go ahead, thank you.
Can I ask, where are those solar fields?
Um, yes, you can. Off the top of my head, I don't remember where they are. I can get that information for you.
Have you actually, they're up in the city?
No.
No, 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 we're up north. It's actually up north where it's sunnier.
Okay.
They have sun.
It's like, isn't it like off the last victory road you're on?
No, no, it's, it's way up.
They're up in the St. Lawrence Valley.
It's in Jefferson County.
Yeah, up that way.
I, I don't remember the town.
So they make that, if we get the, we bought it, they make the.
I think it's just.
We lease the land. It's a lease.
Okay, and how we make the money off of?
We buy the city.
I hope there's no more amber alerts kind of council meeting.
So you got one right now?
Been recovered.
Oh, they found them.
Been recovered.
They found them.
It was in the basement. Okay, page 51 is our street cleaning cost center. Only change here.
The number for page?
Page 51. Page 51. Uh, has to do with big line, salt. When Dave, Dave put his original number in for the department request, was the exact same amount that was for his current year. Even though it shows the revised budget 554, that's just from some carryovers, it was really 457. With the onset of the brine, we're hoping that that number will come in at 425.
So we decided to go with brine?
We've been talking about brine for many years. We've dabbled with it.
She knows a lot about brine because she's with somebody that.
Yeah, she's with the godfather of brine.
Right.
It's a wonder she's not purple.
I mean, I've talked, Rick and I have a good working relationship.
We've used it though.
We've used brine.
Last of it.
There's a lot to it.
Yeah.
How does it work? Do we, do we make the brine?
No.
From, no?
We, at this point, we're not making the brine. We either go to New York State DOT, or I have the option of going up to New Hartford to get brine.
Oh, okay. So what we have to do is invest in the right kind of equipment that could spray, spray brine rather than?
Right now, all our smaller plow trucks have saddle tanks that have 250 to 500 gallons of brine that we can handle. One of the trucks that we bought last fall, which we will not get until later this year, is a 10-wheeler truck that can be converted over to a flatbed, which will have then a larger tank on it, which will be for brine.
And so the idea is that you're just gonna be using literally less salt, because the brine allows you to spread out more evenly, rather than chunks of it.
You're watering down the salt, that's what you're doing.
It depends.
It's a pre-treatment.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pre-treatment, so if you're not. Yeah, it just depends what type, you're not gonna use it for every snow event, but there are certain snow events that you don't have to use salt for, like, well.
And it means that we'll be putting less salt on the roads over the month long.
It's also pretty effective, it's also pretty effective when you have ice pack on the road, you go out and spray it. If it's sunny, it's not something to do it, but if the sun hits it, breaks the pack right off.
We've, we've had different experiments. We have some guys that believe in it, and other guys that.
You don't believe in it?
Not at all.
Yeah, works for New Hartford, cut our, cut our costs in half.
Why don't you believe it?
Doesn't work. If you, you put it down before it snows, that definitely will take, but once it snows, it just doesn't. It's, it's a pre-treatment. You have to get out ahead of it.
It's either pre-treatment, or it's hard ice pack.
Right.
I mean, if you look at it, when New York State, because I write 49 all the time, so. We don't even know there's snow coming, and New York State's out salting the roads already, for God's sakes. You know, it's the same.
Why?
No, they're actually using salt, but you would use.
You got a question, Joe?
Yeah, I got a question from Mr. Vincent there. Does brine take less effect on rusting cars than salt does?
Yes.
I don't know. I was thinking.
Uh, there's a lot of different, depending on what you wanna read about it, some say that brine is more corrosive to vehicles.
Why would it be?
Because it sticks, it sticks, it sticks easier when it's, when it's wet, and when it bounces off.
So when a car.
When the salt hits your car, it just hits the car and bounces off.
Yeah.
So the only time, once it hits the pavement, it dries, but so if you're following a truck and it gets behind your car, then it would be a problem.
Yeah, brine you're putting down when the road is dry at this point.
Right.
And then when the first snow hits, it starts to melt it, but it's only good for up to about two, maybe two and a half inches. Then after that, you're going to use salt, or New Hartford uses cinders, or New Hartford can use a combination of salt and cinders. They have a different arsenal of tools. Where we just use right now strictly salt because of our catch bases.
This is a product, it's stone.
Which is dirt, it's literally dirt cheap.
It's dirt cheap.
I thought you were saying bees.
No, not bees. No, bees.
Saying the bees. I thought you were saying it too, Mike. Cinders, it's bees. Okay, any more questions on that cost center? Okay, then page 52 is our demolition account. This account goes up and down based on what's happening during the year. Historically, most of our demolition costs as it relates to tipping fees, if it's in the CBBG area, will be taken out of CBBGs, so there's always a budget there for demolition, so you don't really see a budget in here.
And we're still doing, uh, other towns and villages, shared services and things of that nature. Have they asked for any, or?
We did, we did.
I know we did it a couple times.
About six months ago, we did the Village Green. They did an awesome job, the City of Utica did. They came in.
So we get income from that, they pay for our workforce and our equipment?
Yeah, we have a few, there's a few things that are in the works, but nothing concrete yet. There's one in Waterville again.
There's a building.
Clark Mills, they've, they're looking at a big mill project that they wanna stick down maybe, but no commitments they think.
There may even be one on Cascade I heard about last night.
On Cascade?
On Cascade.
Really?
Yes.
Not my mother's house.
I don't know, it could be.
So I have a question. So, and this question is kind of vague, because I came from home, I had a thought this in relation to this. I have an email from Sam Russo, who, I believe it was from Sam, about recycling, reusing demolished materials. Wouldn't, wouldn't that cut down on our tipping fees?
No.
We, we can't do that, because the majority of the way we take things down is on a variance. We take it down top, we don't evade it. The only way you could ever take stuff out is if the building was totally abated, it'd be safe.
Okay.
And we typically don't do it that. We go back and forth many times on it.
Yeah, either we can't get into the building to make it safe to, to de, you know, decontaminate it.
Right.
Or it's.
What you're trying to say is go in there and strip it?
Yeah.
Well, it's basically deconstruction.
Sometimes it's stuff before you even get there.
So you've gotta, actually gotta have somebody that knows how to do deconstruction before you go and do it. Right. It's the Utica variance, as it's called. We're able to get an engineer to certify that it's inhabitable, and then we can go in and take it down with everything in it. We use water suppression to keep the asbestos or the dust down, and that's all regulated by the state department of labor.
Right, okay. Okay, but it would be fair, yeah, all right, any questions?
Any other questions on demolitions? Okay, then we're gonna move on to parks and playgrounds, page 45.
Wanna do sewers? Wanna do sewers?
Oh, yeah, we can do, do you wanna do sewers now? Yeah, we can do sewers now. I'd rather do sewers. So sewers is page.
73?
73. So this year.
Can I ask a question, because we don't, we haven't talked about the amendments, and I've seen that council person, Celeste Friend, has an amendment to increase DPW. So, I mean, is there any, any thought behind that with regard to?
Where those funds come from? You already put where, where the lines.
If you got another worker, could you fill their time?
Where is DPW at now in terms of employment?
47 full-time employees.
How many vacancies right now?
None.
That's good, good for you.
We just hired our last guy a couple weeks ago, and he just started, just started.
We probably have three on the way out this year.
Okay, but if you, so no vacancies at the moment, that's good. So that means if you did get another line, it's not like you're waiting to fill vacancies.
You said 47?
How many person?
There's three shifts, there's about nine on the second shift, and then the other tours, but. There's three shifts, there's about nine on the second shift, and then the other tours, but...
And just to, for me to understand, most of these, if you were to add, um, just to add the budget line amount, and then you all replace it where you feel like the need is right.
It would have to go back to E and A, because they, they create the positions.
They create, E and A has to create the actual line, the avoid. And there'd be a little divvying up, so some of that would have to go to the right of the line, some of it would go to the right of the line, et cetera. Correct?
Yes, yes. There'd be a little fine shooting.
So, please, uh, forgive me for buttoning in, but I know Dave, we've talked, Heather, we've talked. Putting, uh, one person on would be like putting lipstick on a pig.
That's correct, sir.
If you're gonna do anything, you need to put six people on. And, uh, I mean, we've talked about what you had, at one time, we've had one hundred and twenty people there. Then you've cut it down to seventy-five, now we have forty-nine. So, we don't realize, or forty-seven, we don't realize, you'd realize it, but I don't think any of these people realize, if you, we've been...
Whoa, 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 timeout.
Well, we've been pretty lucky in the last twelve years that we haven't had three days of snow, eight, nine inches.
Extremely lucky.
Extremely lucky, 'cause if we did, the city would be crippled. And you know that, and everybody else knows that, and putting one person on is gonna do nothing whatsoever. So, if we ever have to do anything, you need to put six, we need to, we need to get people from, if you can ever come up with a program that we talked about that's very difficult, you would need to try to hire back in the wintertime some temporary people, which is very difficult because we're in a union situation, so I understand that. That's why I didn't, I mean, I've talked with you guys off the record many times, and I know where we are with it. We just gotta, we gotta ride with it.
Ideally, just so everybody knows, ideally, I would need additional fifteen people.
Right.
We'd, we'd love to be able to do two twelve-hour shifts in the wintertime, so we have complete coverage, and people go home and sleep, whatever, and we'd be good to go.
Right.
Right now, we, we do what we can.
Right.
We do what we can.
And you understand?
It's everybody that does what they can.
A lot of our guys who have retired are up there in age where, you know, them coming back and plowing part-time, a lot of them are sixty-five, sub, getting sixty-eight, sixty-ish.
So, do you guys have, is there any, some sort of, uh, like, you have a lot of new people, and it's difficult to drive trucks and the plows and all that? Do you have, like, a way, are you training the newer guy?
We're trying.
You're trying, which is difficult because...
So, in the old days...
The old days, you took a young kid, and he rode with the guy, and you were good to go.
A senior guy would take the new guy on, and, you know, he would win with that guy for a number of years, and that's how they learned.
Yeah.
Uh, we have some of that now, but not as much as we should.
Right.
Uh, we provided outside training by third parties to come in and do classroom training, and then maybe a couple hours out on the field. It gives you the basics, but you really need to be out there in a storm.
We have guys that are heavy equipment operators with four years' experience, three years' experience. When I started, you weren't a heavy equipment operator for ten years.
Right. I remember when your sign man was a wing guy learning as a kid, right?
Yeah. And what we're doing now, the people, if we can get people.
Right.
I mean, John will remember back when he was there, when there was a job posted for DPW, there was a line out the door.
Right.
Today, I'm on deed, I'm on other avenues.
Once you put out the jet, they have a permit that turns into a whole, it wipes out...
Right, and, and we talked, I know we talked, are we gonna try to do that? Were we gonna, I know, were we gonna try to give, you want the person, if the person gets hired with a permit, you will give them the training so they can go take their road test, but you're not gonna...
The CDL thing is all changed now, too.
Yeah.
Right.
New York State, well, the federal government has made changes to CDL drivers now. You actually have to attend an eighty-hour class.
To even get a permit.
To even get the permit now.
Heather, um, Heather, can you answer me what, what the, uh...
Mr. Stubbey.
What the total is for DPW work? I see forty-nine as the set, forty-nine as the set.
Take over your chair. You done? I'm done.
What, the total, what?
Like, how much would it cost to add DPW, a DPW worker?
It'd be more than forty thousand, because you've got healthcare, you've got healthcare and those kinds of things. Probably, probably, probably about six, total six years. Yeah. Yeah. They have to start out very high.
How many, uh, how many are on, like, the twenty-two oh seven As, Charlies, you know, for police department, you have nobody out on disability whatsoever?
We have one, one guy, and it's just plain disability.
Workers comp.
All right, so is he coming back, do you think, or?
He's one of the ones that I expect to be gone by the end of the year.
Okay.
I don't know if his health will qualify enough to...
You're not fully up, you're down one anyways, it's because of that. And that has, now, that's, is that a...
We have guys out on sur, uh, we had a guy who was out for a few weeks on surgery, but nothing where we've been without somebody for a long period of time, other than him.
That was it? I mean, like, last year, the year before, it's just like a normal thing, just one or zero, or?
Yeah, no, it was, I mean, a lot, with, with this situation, it's a health issue.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're...
I mean, it's not a work-related injury, it's more of a personal health issue.
You got an older crew, and they go down a lot?
Actually, not, I can't say that anymore, we gotta split pretty evenly, but the older guys with all the experience are heading out the door, so that's...
But when there's ten inches of snow, you want the guys that have been doing it for twenty years, not the new guys learning with ten inches of snow either. So, you know, it works both ways at that time, so, Mark?
Oh, most of it.
Plowing, we have, we have extreme growing pains.
So, getting back to the disability, can, like, when you use the number two oh seven A, that doesn't apply to the DPW. You guys are straight compensation, New York State compensation, correct?
Right, or Teamsters, Teamsters has their own disability for a certain amount of...
So, that's just police and fire with the two oh seven A, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else next?
Uh, sewer, page seventy-three. Um, as you may recall, we did, we haven't raised rates here probably five or six years. I get told every so often, we have to raise rates, but I don't see why we have to raise rates.
Well, we didn't have also sixty million dollars in excess cash and budget, and budget flows at the time when people were asking us to raise rates, too.
Right. Well, I, yeah, so, um, page seventy-three, seventy-three. Our plug number is always the middle line, account number two eleven capital outlay. So, I take what I think the revenues are gonna be for the year, I minus what I think all the other expenditures are, including debt, and that's always the plug, and that's what engineering has to do maintenance. They do a lot of sewer line, lining, um...
Tevising, cleaning.
I will say, in addition to this, they are, they are reconstructing Dudley Ave, a portion of Dudley Ave, fifteen, fifteen block. And there is some, our money going in there, I think about seven hundred thousand to put a brand-new sewer line in. So, that's a pretty exciting place.
Last fall, we did one block is shot.
One block shot.
Those, when water comes from on the road.
So, if you have any questions about sewer, nothing really changing there.
Dave Short's the only one that I know that gives money back in his budget, so.
Usually.
Councilman Burmester, you have a question?
I let you know, if, if you're a citizen, would you agree that...
Talking to the new judges, and...
Would that take care of some of the problems with their sewers?
Would take care of some?
Yes, it would. It would, it would help.
Problem being is, in the wintertime, some people have yards that are, it's taking fifty barrels, thirty barrels, especially in the hill area, so...
Or Prospect, or Bonnie Bray up that way with the bigger lawns.
Same, well, it's okay for you to put it, you know...
That was a compromise when solid waste came in, that we'd have a open, a period to satisfy that need. But ideally, we'd love to have everything containerized, that would make the city so much cleaner. But again, what do you do with those people that have the bigger lawns? I mean...
I still say we're two generations, Rome just had one pickup a year.
Yeah.
You wouldn't think so by the phone calls we get. No, I know.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we get very irate phone calls.
Um, yeah, we...
I'm quite sure you guys do, too.
We got that, yeah.
But, we, we do the best we can with what we got, we really do.
But I think I agree with Mike, I think we're two jokers, but...
Rome does leaf pickup, that's it. Spring, you're on your, you can put it out in a barrel, the day before your garbage pickup, it goes out in a barrel.
And then, and then...
That's the only way you put it up. If you're putting out sweet, you know, sticks, you have to come forward, put it in a bundle.
We, we visited Schenectady several years ago and looked over their solid waste program that the city, the DPW had, and they couldn't believe, they couldn't believe what we allow and what, and what they allow. It's night and day.
They're two jokers.
They charge for everything, and we don't charge for nothing.
Well, we also raised taxes, forty percent, and now increase in services, so at least you get a benefit, outweigh the benefits of everything.
You do, but, you know...
Unfortunately, I've never had to go there, so...
Right, yeah. I mean, forty-seven guys can do a great job, though.
The most benefit we have is our...
That's it?
Any other questions on the sewer?
Nope.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, we're gonna start with, um, parks and playgrounds, page forty-five, um, parks maintenance. Now, it would appear in the first blush that wages are up rather substantially. There was one position missing last year, we don't know why it wasn't in there, and they also had a three-year, three-year, three-year retro, as it relates to CSEA, and they're all CSEA in that department, the payroll's on page sixty-nine.
What were those, what were those, um, what was the CSEA contract settlement?
Threes.
Percent increases?
Threes.
For three, all threes?
For all threes, and also one time, one thousand dollar payment.
Five threes.
No, five threes, five threes.
And what was the last one?
Uh, and they all got a thousand dollar...
A one-time thousand dollar...
Side-on bonus, whatever you wanna call it, it's right, whatever you call it. And they're all paying for their benefits?
Uh, they are, they will pay, aren't they, are, if, if they started after about seven or eight years ago, they're paying twenty percent. If they didn't, um, next year, not twenty-three, but in twenty-four, they'll be paying, um...
Seven, seven...
Five.
Seven point five, or...
Five percent.
Five percent.
That's what I thought, five percent.
And then the following year, seven point five.
Yeah. They'll be moved up to seven point five.
Yeah.
And we also had quite a few guys hit their longavities this, this coming year.
The young guys don't care, they're lucky enough.
Yeah.
They can care.
We, we have...
They don't care, I know, it's a little store, they prepare, you can buy them for a...
They'll earn your position.
Bodies bring everything out. It's all we were taught, like, put money in retirement, you know, as a kid, they don't care.
As you, as you look down through, you see seasonal employment, I mean, we average about eighty, it says sixty. Um, once again, this summer, the mayor's gonna employ the marine team, which we did last year, and had a good result from.
We did.
Are we gonna start that at an earlier time than we did last year?
Yes.
And that comes from separate lines, I suppose?
That comes from CDBG.
Right.
Yep. Um, still have about the same amount of trees, flowers. We'll have to say, a lot of work, um, is gonna be done this year on parks, it's gonna be massive.
I hope it has to do with baseball fields, too.
It does.
It does.
It does, we met on that today.
I don't know about her, but...
Can I get one baseball third field, maybe a couple for each park?
The harbor.
And the harbor.
Yeah, but that's also, we have a skateboard field across the...
And Lincoln Park, and just dog parks, and there's a lot, a lot of park stuff going on there.
I'm not a fan of the dog parks in certain areas, but...
Where's that going?
I think they, I mean, if you need a dog shark, I just don't think they should be near kids' events, like football fields and baseball fields, and so on and so forth, so...
If you turn the page, onto page forty-six, there's playgrounds. Um, there again, really, nothing changed here, other than just contractual raises.
Is there graffiti removal in here for, for parks? When they draw a big gigantic gun?
That comes down.
That comes at a mark.
Yeah.
No, I know, but remember, they were, they kept just drawing big...
And you always find it, I don't know how that is.
So, the graffiti on the tunnel, down at Sherman Drive, that's, you don't do that?
You're always the first call every year.
I know, I know.
There's one under now?
Yeah, the graffiti all over that big, huge tunnel.
Inside or outside?
Outside.
Oh, the one that you just did.
That's the first I heard of it, you?
The graffiti on South Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just did that.
No, it's been there over a year.
Well, no, I'm just saying, after, after it was just cleaned up with you.
That's what I thought.
As we know, it's constant, the kids get in there at nighttime, even after we opened it up, they still get in there and graffiti.
No, they graffitied the building that you just did, too, in the new park.
Yeah.
They painted.
I mean, do you plan on covering that up?
Yes.
All right, actually.
Yeah.
I think we should paint it.
So, you said it's a lot, where's the, that's coming from, Harba money?
Yes, Harba and CDBG. It's Chancellor Park, we're gonna be seeing a lot of activity in Chancellor Park, Proctor Park.
Seymour Park.
Seymour Park.
And are we done with the Longo Field after this one?
Um...
I mean, we shouldn't need anything else.
Yes, yeah, uh, well, we need, well, the bleachers are in there, what's, what's, the only thing that really needs to be updated is bathrooms. We don't have enough bathrooms.
The way that the, the way that the, going to the football field, okay? The way that the pavement is set up, is it doesn't, it doesn't make that much sense. Like, you literally have to walk around to go to the outside, like, there's nothing that's like, I mean, can we relook at that possibly? I mean, you're not gonna dig up paint, not gonna...
Well, I mean, there's, there's an opening on the one end, closest to Welsh Bush, then there's a, the center gate, is the way it was designed.
The pavement doesn't line up to the gate.
Yeah, well, we're actually, we're gonna, we actually wanna pave that service road this year, and then we'll look at it.
Well, it, it kinda has to be, because people drive down it all the time, and...
Well, we blocked it off, we put in new fencing last fall, Dave's...
We have to make it ADI compliant, too.
Which one, the ones on...
We got the concrete barriers.
Coming right through.
I'm talking about where the park is, to go where the baseball field is.
Yes, right in front of it, right?
No, I'm, no, when you get in, so people can still drive down the middle. Remember, we had, those people were parking on the grass and stuff like that?
Yes, yes.
You can still get in there.
Are we still, are we on Longo still?
Yeah.
Because we blocked off on Welsh Bush side, you can't drive through.
Welsh Bush you can, the other side you can still drive.
On the rock side, you probably could, but we have a chain that goes across.
We do. The problem with that is when Mel Carmel literally was in play, they used to get a lot of deliveries during the daytime. And when we had it blocked off, that created a problem, so Rock Brandy, who happened to be right there when he was there, had no problem going over there, open up the gate to get the service trucks down there. Once those guys left, the next group of parents come in, no one's really that available, so...
Steve, I got all the time in the world.
Deliver it to somebody's house.
I mean, I ride my bike down there, I mean, I need me, I need to take the key.
We can, we can have you a key master.
Key master, yeah. I gotta pee on the side of that building, you don't have a key to get in.
I remember there was a key, key master in Ghostbusters.
Get more playground?
Yeah.
Yes, that's ours.
That's a playground out of her, okay, right?
You got more buildings?
Yeah, the little one next to you, the other one. Do we have any, put any money into that, Heather?
We did have, we did put money into that last few years. Uh, we redid Cory's court, we redid the basketball court. We put a brand-new, uh, swing set in.
Okay.
Uh, we put new wood servicing in underneath the, we did new rims, so we've done quite a bit of work there. The original arrangement was that municipal housing authority would help, help us keep it clean.
Right, and they don't, every year it's a struggle.
It's a struggle.
All the parks are struggling to keep it clean, it's really tough.
Remember, there's, there's eighteen full-time parks guys. We have the third-largest park system in New York State, and it's always been eighteen guys.
Well, I agree, I mean, listen, I think that there should at least be six more added to the parks, and then at least make them dual.
Where, what helps, what, what helps me with parks is the summertime seasonal people, that's where I need them.
I understand that.
The full-timers don't help me, because in the winter time, I have guys double, geared up double in a truck. Because we're not mowing lawns, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, our downtime is quite bad. So as long as I'm able to get the seasonal people, quality seasonal people, I'm fine, I'm, I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions?
Okay, Dave's gonna stick around, but we're gonna move on to more of a engineering take, page nineteen. Page nineteen starts with engineering, so if you also turn to, um, hey...
Heather, you're doing pools, you're going to the playgrounds, pools?
I was gonna do those next week.
Next week, okay, very good.
I know, we really just get out of the way, or do you have, not prepared for it?
No, we can, we can.
I mean, instead of making them come back?
Yeah.
There's not that much, I mean, we put so much money into the pools, I mean, there's really no...
Okay, any questions on pools?
I know, right, I mean, we...
I can buy a thing.
We put new roofs on two, we put new liners in two, and we keep buying equipment.
We bonded for two million to fix the pools.
I mean, several years ago, I came to the council for, um, a big bond for the pools, and that was fantastic, we were able to, those pools need a lot of help, and further investigation with Mike's group, we found out that we needed even further work, so we, we did a lot with that money.
We actually, you know, the two big pools, we put new bottles in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on page forty-seven, by the way.
Can, can I ask, because I think, particularly like, because I heard the comment, like, nobody's swimming and stuff like that, so, I think with all of this money going into the parks, I'll be interested as, who are we talking to when it comes to these designs, the right mental justice amenities actually happen? Figuring out what people want, what, what's happening across the country that's innovative, because, you know, outdoor pools, some cities have really moved toward, uh, sheltering pools and making them indoors, so they can get use around year-round. Now, we might not be at the point to do that, but I mean, do, do we continue to do these kind of, you know, makeshift, not makeshift repairs, but actually put the money into something that can be usable and sustainable, like having an indoor pool? Because, you know, you might get more make-for-a-buck in that way, so I'm just interested in, with all of the money going in the parks, I mean, we seen soccer park, I mean, who wants that, you know, six million dollars for a soccer park in Harbor, uh, alone, right? So there's other things that we can, I just, I'm interested in figuring out, are we just doing stuff to deal with, let's say, or who's actually...
So UED hired, um, they went out, quite an act, active RFP process, to hire, um, a landscape and recreation, um, engineer, experts, to, to give us advice on what to do. As it relates to the pools, we, we don't see, we don't see a lot of use in our pools, we just don't.
Not for the way it costs us.
We don't.
Right, but shut down a pool.
So...
If you shut down a pool, that's a black eye for us.
So, you know, several years ago, we, we hired a consultant to come in and do a park master plan, that had neighborhood involvement, and we had working groups and everything. And based on the master plan, is the continuing further development of our park system at this point. Uh, prior to the park master plan, I had hired a consultant many years ago to talk about our swimming pools, and whether or not an indoor facility is feasible. It was feasible for the concept of having one. Now the, now the idea of, the feasibility of it is, is can we staff it, can we run it, and that's what we're running into. Plus, we'd have to...
Year-round maintenance?
We'd have to enclose a pool. As we can see, for the, the three or, the ten weeks that were open, it's a lot of money just to keep a pool open, so...
But can we close one for, like, for indoor, but I mean, it's tough decisions, but, but if, if we're not getting the use during the summer, right? I get staffing, I think this goes back to the bigger conversation about hiring in general, and all this stuff is staffing and, and services and all this stuff, but, I guess the question, at what point do we make those decisions, uh, toward that, uh, quality of life issues that I don't care about?
They're big decisions, just like a fire station, or a police station, what, what do you do to, if, how you wanna close one?
Right, but I mean, in the past couple of years, you've also hit COVID, so you didn't really have a lot of people going.
We didn't.
So, I mean, prior to that, you definitely, there was a reason that you needed to fix the pools, probably, two years ago.
We did.
Because there was a use for it, you know, so I definitely think that there was a slowdown.
Right.
I think that now you're starting to see a little bit of...
Always, there's always maintenance to be done.
All sorts of equipment. I mean, you can enclose one of those, I'll tell you what, a building over it, but, I mean, it's a huge expense. And then, again, you gotta run the thing, three hundred sixty-five acres.
We looked at Buckley Pool.
That would be the why, is the other people in Addison Miller are gonna be pissed off that they didn't do it.
Yeah, that's, you always...
Yeah, that always went.
Yeah, what do you...
You closed this one early, why'd you close this one early?
He did that, no doubt.
So also, also on page forty-seven, we have tennis. The only thing I wanna point out here, we had some mold issues this past year, um, and we had to hire an outside contractor to come in and get rid of the mold, and we expected to have the same problem again this year, um, and so that's why the contractual number's high.
Heather, what's the mold from?
It's runoff, that sits on the courts. Lately, when we get...
Literally on the court, so.
When we, when we get these big storms, the water just runs off the hill and just cuts right across the tennis courts. So we used to be able to just squeegee it off, and we're fine, but now we have all these Wimbledon players up there, and they want pristine courts.
I gotta be honest with you, like, I drive home from work sometimes, and there's a ton of people, there's a ton of people, especially at night, I mean, there, that's awesome.
We are very unique, we have eighteen tennis courts in one setting, there's really no other place, not even the Uni, not even Syracuse University has it. So...
They use it for sectionals and all that, right?
Sure. And we're adding more and more amenities all the time, we're looking, Mike and I have always wanted to do something more with the tennis court building, too.
Pickleball.
You know, do something different. Pickleball's been coming up, um...
I mean, really, because you think about it, with the Parkway Rec Center, I mean, especially to, for older people.
I always, and I, I, I talked to the mayor a few times about, why can't we cover the first court, tennis court, three-quarters of it, or half of it, whatever, and make it a nice skating rink, we already have it lit, lit up, I know the surface, I know they have the poster, you could put whatever you wanna put around the post, for, you know, so nobody would get hurt.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we have something like that? Well, it's lit, they could, it gets dark at four o'clock, five o'clock, and the kids could go there, lighted area. Give me a reason why we can't.
So, probably about ten years ago, we, we applied for a grant, just for that sake, doing the last six courts, the tennis courts, to make that a ice skating rink. And we never got the grant, obviously, but the engineering part of it was just incredible, what we had to do. And at that point, we would've had to bring in tractor-trailers with chillers on them, to chill the, to chill it.
Go to the guy on Higby Road.
Yeah, but why can't you just do like the old-fashioned rink, like they do?
Because, because the...
The guy on Higby Road knows how to do ice skating.
Dave said he knows what he's doing.
The courts have a pitch to them. When Mark Ford ran it, we did put ice, put an ice rink on those tennis courts, and it never worked out for him, because it's blacktop, it heats up during the day, and it melts the ice. And it has a natural slant, so the water was never even, so the water could never freeze at the appropriate level.
So there's nothing that we can cover it with whatever, boards, or sheets, or plastic, whatever we can do, cover it, place a little liner on it, and fill it up with water.
You wanna know what would be the best-case scenario?
Yeah.
Instead of a backyard, I mean, I know where Dan, yeah. Get the auditorium to do open skating, I mean, why wouldn't you do something like that? I mean, really, I know it's not outdoor, but I mean, they start under our own authority, if you were thinking you'd do like free ice skating?
That's something that we need to talk to, tell me about.
All right, move on.
Page forty-eight, the ski chalet.
Who's running the ski chalet, because I've seen like Facebook posts, who's actually getting paid to run it? Because I'm very confused by it.
We ended our private entity with Mark Ford several years ago.
Those were the one, the snowcat.
And then COVID hit, COVID hit, so we weren't open. The last two years, we've tr, the city has been running it. Last year, we really didn't have much weather to run it, this year, we've tried to run it, but what, we ran into a roadblock with the State Department of Labor, who oversees the operation of the lifts. They require us now to have two certified ski patrol anytime we're on, or anytime that the hill is open. And that's the way it used to be years and years ago, when we ran it. When the private entities took over, the state sort of took a blind eye to it, and they, they allowed it to happen. We can't find ski patrol people to go on the hill anymore.
You can't find snowmobile, like, people like firemen that do snowmobiles or something like that.
And I think you're aware of that, I did call.
So, we checked with the state, they'd be great with the fire department, it's a paid fire department, EMS, paramedics, but they said, the only way that would work is if they'd put a rig with the firefighters right at the bottom of the hill, the whole time that we're open.
I mean, what, maybe there's a couple things, if they stay, you know, I don't know what's...
We're open four days, we'd be open four days away, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
But, but wait a minute now.
We can use those...
Ski patrols have backpacks, I mean, couldn't they just equip the firefighters with the proper materials? No, even a snowmobile, or whatever, to get up and down the hill.
Unit Fire Department is part of the evac plan, and also part of the first aid plan, so your ski patrol are your first responders, they're there to mobilize, whatever they have to do to the patient.
They know everything about it, believe me.
And then, you know, they bring down a new...
We train on that hill, we train to take people down from the chairlift, and I know you have to get the chairlift inspected every year, too, and we had a problem doing that as well.
We are up to par on all our inspections.
And it works, the chairlifts work?
Yes, we are inspected by our private insurance company, we're, we're inspected by a private entity, and we're inspected by New York State Department of Labor.
Joe wants to be taken there for his birthday today.
No, to go for a ride.
Yeah, I do know, this is coming off track a little bit, as far as the concessions that we bid out in there. I do know a person, who's a replica person, is looking to go in the Bottom of Valley View, to put golf simulators, keep that open, and he would work that also. That would be, it'd be year-round. There's an RFP coming up for about a year.
So he should put that in there.
He just needs to answer it. Right, very, that's what he was asking, there is... Yeah, that's coming up. That's why I called you the other day.
All right, any questions on the budget?
I did, I'm getting back to it, so who is, who is actually the staff person for like PR for the ski chalet right now? Like, who's running it, because there's somebody that's being paid, that's advertising, that's there, that's coordinating everything?
We have a person that we have hired through the youth bureau who does programming for that area up there.
Yeah, who is that?
Uh...
Honka?
Honka.
Okay, so she is paid for by the city?
So the youth department received a grant.
Yeah, she's paid for by the city to...
Received a grant from the Wadis Foundation, to pay for staffing, and to pay for ski supplies, old shoes, also tubes.
Tube, tubes.
Tubes, yes. Yes, so her and her husband are, at this point, when you see the Facebooks, when you see anything in the hall, I mean, there's stuff in the elevator or something, that's her.
Okay, but it is a paid position, they're just, okay, that the city, that the city's...
She's getting nineteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
But listen, but, okay, so, so, so let's go to this, because we, we talk about like recreation and stuff like that, we have a director of recreation in this city. So all of these can't be hard to do, I don't understand why that's the case. When we pay a full-time person and an assistant director of recreation, in the youth bureau, I don't understand why they aren't doing these types of things, that we would have to go and hire a honka. I mean, and, and I've said this years past, that we don't do enough in our youth bureau, right? That's not on you, you took on that position as a staff, whatever, we have a director of recreation, and I don't think that sometime they're performing, if all of these questions that we have, go with, well, it's too hard, well, we gotta organize this, and we gotta do that, I mean, that really comes down to, so I mean, my frustration has been, since I've been on the council, all of these opportunities we miss, like Samantha said, who, who's supposed to be doing it? So now you're saying that we hired honka to do something that maybe our director of recreation could do?
Well...
That went to read, eh?
Yes, it did, yes, it did, both the grant and the positions.
That go out.
I will tell you that our director of recreation is... There was a press release.
I know, she sits on MHA, I know what she sits there.
It was, in the OD, um, so, let's get back to when they actually did do this, they do it on the weekends. I'm not, I, 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 I hear what you're saying a hundred percent, I, I don't have any defense for that, but we would be paying our recreation, our head of recreation overtime to come in, to, to implement these programs on Saturdays and Sundays, not saying that can't be done, but I will say that Lonnie Jenkins, Lonnie Jenkins, and that's why I wanted to leave some of this stuff to next week, because he's gonna be in here, and all this stuff, the ski chalets, all tied together, even the...
Oh, I didn't know that Lonnie was coming in next week.
Yes.
All right, so we can, I mean, we can pause and, you know, save for more questions.
So I think, I'll get him ready for that.
Yeah, give him that.
Okay.
So you could, I mean, realistically, you probably wouldn't like it, but realistically, the two, you, you could actually take, say, Monday and Wednesday off, or work the weekends, but...
Or, or not him, or...
I'm not saying, I'm not on top of that, I like Lonnie, probably don't wanna do that, but...
I mean, there's Lonnie, there's Chad, there's Chad, and there's also a Janine Johnson, who I am...
Let's, let's wait for them to come in, and they can answer those questions.
Oh, now you went off the hot seat.
I don't see, I don't see Lonnie...
They should be here to defend themselves.
I agree, I agree, wholeheartedly, I didn't know that this, that was, that was part of the...
Okay, so let's, let's start doing engineering, page nineteen. Um, one of the things I wanna point, page nineteen.
I didn't, I didn't know that they were supposed to come next week.
Um, what I wanna explain to you that's new here this year, you'd also have to turn to page fifty-eight, which is the salaries. Um, you'll see a couple of a grade jump, uh, for a couple of people, um, yeah, so I'm gonna let Mike explain why the mayor's proposing this.
The, um, for my assistant engineers, and Austin follows underneath that as well, he's gonna pull that title, he's an engineer, um, graduating soon. There's a disparity between what the city pays and what the state pays, and it's just trying to jump them up a couple grades to get them up, it still doesn't get it up to where the state is, but it's getting them a little bit closer. I mean, I've been advertising for engineers to hire for the last three years, and I've got nobody. Um, I have one young man that has driven up from Fort Klein area, um, is a paving inspector for me all last year. He's a two-year, um, degree graduate from MDCC, he's actually moved to the city to accept, um, a junior engineer position in April. Um, so, so out of three years, I got a kid that went to MD, who really wants to be an engineer, he only wants to go to school for two years at this point. That's the fruit of my labor on trying to hire somebody. Good guy, um, young, very eager, um, but, so, anyway, going back to what we're, we're adjusting.
And we work with the colleges, this isn't like...
Yeah, we constantly work with that, we constantly with Sumi. We, um, we, we actually had Brian Juticki in here for the last month, helping us on some other projects, because I'm just behind on stuff.
No, I think they do a great job, their staff, I mean, they're out there, they're in the field, every single day I see them out there, and they're always doing something, and, and they, uh, actually showed up at a couple of the community meetings, North Utica's, but, I mean, very knowledgeable, I thought they're, it's well-deserved, I, I'm glad they're getting something, because of their staff.
I'm sorry, what?
How far are you away from the state?
They're still quite a ways away from the state, but, you know, baby steps, I think, you know, this, we, when I talked to the mayor about it, this is what he agreed, you know, I, I actually pushed the mayor on it.
I mean, there's a lot of people that are doing a lot less, making a lot more money than, than that.
Yeah, then, these guys all...
I mean, no offense to, not, not anybody here, but I'm saying...
Stephanie's out there on all the stormwater stuff, she, she speaks excellently, she saves my ass all the time, when we go to North Utica, she saves me, because she's quick. You know, I mean, they're really good people, Austin does all your street paving, he's very knowledgeable, he worked with Sinad for, for two years, yes, I did.
Where was Sinad?
Sinad moved to Florida, he, he left, too bad, I mean, I love Sinad, he's a great guy. So Austin, when he was going to Sumi, um, he interned with Sinad, and Sinad left, Austin graduated, he took over Sinad's program. So, I mean, and the kids that go get, he'll work all the time.
We designed, we designed the paving program pretty specific into a lot of the things that we wanted, I mean, and that, that's, that's a nice part that we get to look back on now, especially for them to have something to actually go by, you know?
No, I mean, you take a look at last year, I mean, we went late, but we also paved eight million dollars opposed to five.
That's another question that I actually have for you, as far as that goes. Why haven't we been budgeting, or, excuse me, bonding if necessary, prior, like, now, like, January, in order to get the bids in, in order to, because remember that we did it at one...
The bids are going out now, the, the, the bid is just about ready, we're just finalizing streets, we should have that done in the next few weeks, the bid will go out, and then we'll, you know, we'll accept it in the first week or so of April, so we can award it. Um, the repairs contract I've left open, so we can get going on that right away, and the striping is still open, we're gonna get on that right away, so, you'll see activity right away.
Are we striking Leland, Anne, by any chance, remember?
Leland needs to be paved, so.
Okay, so...
So, the problem with Leland was that we have a, a waterboard leak, um, that services the fire hydrants into the fire training center. They're gonna replace that line, so, we actually had the, all the structures adjusted to the right height, and then turned around and adjusted them down, so Dave could allow. So now there's more of Leland that needs to be paved, so, depending on where we're at with budget on paving, I would like to do a couple more sections of Leland.
Do you already have the streets that you wanna, that you're putting out for the RFP that are gonna get done?
Well, so, we're just, I have a hundred streets strong, we're in the process of picking them up, so, I mean, this is the time of year, you gotta go out, and you can drive every street again, to see what happens.
I taped my streets overnight, you know what I mean, just overnight, real quick, nobody will know.
Well, did you put on, in there, RFP, did you put on like the road back, right? Where they have...
We're changing, yeah, we're changing.
Eight weeks, or six weeks, or what, I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah, I can, six or seven weeks.
Mike, we're changing Herkimer Road back to what it was before, right, those lights are all coming back on.
No, 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 we're, we're...
It jumped all over that one.
We can, we can hire night on Herkimer Road, please.
They should extend it, they should extend it back, so that you can take that left-hander, go to the Van Ransel Leans.
CNS out of Syracuse, they're doing a study on the Leland and Van Ransel Leans.
But we, you had to keep those lights yellow for a little bit, which I...
Well, they're still, yeah, on Van Ransel there.
Burger King's real happy, but Joe's...
Okay, the only other change, really big change, just wanna, for your attention, under engineering, is three lines from the bottom, and you know this year, we had to do the eight-one-one, um, that's the Dick Safe Lake, New York, um, so that two hundred thousand is budgeted for that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I got a call from the state, and it was, hey, you're not part of Dick Safe, you shout, or we're gonna find you. So, we belong to it, I mean, this year, it's actually, it's more than two hundred.
This far it's going on, marketing.
We found that we can figure out, we figured out, now that we've been into it for a year, a couple of things we can do to save some money on it, and get it down a little bit.
I'll be back, yeah, you probably, you know, next couple of weeks, or another budget transfer for that, for the current year.
Heather looks, telling me on that one, but again, it's, I understand your problem, you do. It's not money we're budgeting for it, it's a big cost.
Yeah.
Okay, um, page twenty-one is city hall maintenance, um, not a big change here either, I don't think there's any big initiatives. Um, we also have our facilities department, um, not a big change here either.
Mike, what's going on with Kennedy Plaza?
For all good, we're down, we're down.
Yeah, okay.
Whether or not it sells or not, I don't know.
So that's another question that I was, I was actually gonna have, so are we prepared, that if we don't go for that sale, for budgetary purposes, of what that's gonna impact on this budget?
Well, it's thirteen million dollars, if we don't sell it, you're prepared. I mean, that's the reality of it, we'll have to fix it, I mean, it's not anything we wanna do, it's a huge cost.
No, I'm saying...
I mean, there's part of me that doesn't wanna sell it, because it's attached to the city hall, but that's just my own thought, my personal thought.
Right, right, so that, so that's what I was gonna, back to that question, so have we budgeted for that money that we were supposed to receive? Okay, so we're, we don't have to worry about if that doesn't go through, that, that's gonna take a loss, so it'll just be additional revenue towards the budget?
We'll, we'll be coming back to you for borrowing, for repairs.
For, for the, for the parking garage, which I, you know...
We gave the three billion away, we get, we hit three billion, we gave it.
No, no, for the garage, the sale would not go through. No, no, for the garage. The sale would not go through.
The county for the new garage, so we don't have to pay into that.
Right, that money was for to fix Kennedy parking garage, the money we gave.
This way we don't have to kick in on, how many millions of dollars in it, have you?
Forty.
Forty, forty million dollars, so we're out of it. The mayor saved us on that.
Now, any other questions on city hall maintenance or facilities?
Must be on our email.
Okay, um, let's see here. I want to turn to page forty-three. Um, this is street lighting, and that's.
Page is bigger, not sure.
I can't, I mean, this was. Believe it or not, believe it or not, when Peter did the budget, he built in these things into this. I can't get changed, and so I struggle over here. Okay, page forty-three is the street lighting, um, and as I mentioned, you're going to, you're going to see transfers until we can get this figured out, the realignment on the electric.
What is that for? I'm sorry.
The, the street lighting, um, as I mentioned, I get prepared because you will be seeing some bigger transfers come through. We're pulling from all these other electrical accounts to, to put it in here because you can see year-to-date, it was nine hundred sixty-one thousand, the budget was a million. So, um, we will be looking at that, but, um, everything is going well there. I think we, we're about ninety-five percent complete.
Yeah, we're, we're at the, what is it, paying the act.
Complete their street lighting project everywhere, citywide.
We replaced all the street lights for the entire city.
Now, let me ask you this because I still have some streets that's very dark as, as.
They're dark, starting from the front, so the light shines down. It doesn't have the shade underneath it, so you don't get that. We're mandated to a dark stack of party, we have to upgrade.
Um, what about?
So I realize that's not what you want to hear, Councilor. I understand that.
Yeah, because.
But then also in your district, you have Margaret Woolham, who has tortured me for the last twenty-two years to the light she's too bright. So, Margaret Woolham.
Is she happy now?
Oh, I know her.
Yes, she's much happier because she's, she links. There's a link between street lighting and breast cancer for some reason. She's giving me volume, I mean volumes on this up there. So she's, she's actually, she's very smart.
You can brighten those lights, do I, can't you?
Twenty percent, eighty percent.
So I have a question about the old-fashioned green bulb lights. Those were, are still, some of those are still missing, correct?
Yeah, we're still working on those.
Okay, because there's, for example, Hunt Wright on, at Emerson and Genesee, that's out, that needs to be replaced.
Yeah, there's still work on it. We've got circuit problems on twelve.
Okay, moving on.
We're moving on to page forty-four, parking garages. That's also Mike. Um, just to update you a little bit, um, we did get a grant some time ago doing a couple of things that's going to be coming along, right along. We are going to have pay stations for our parking garages. Um, we're going to have electric arms, so you won't be seeing people there anymore. Um, no, many people, we only have one resource.
We're out of cans.
So we'll be moving some of that money around at some point. We still have people employed, so with some of that parking wage money, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a little bit of extra for some of those expenses that will be coming along, or retros or something.
Hopefully, it's like four, five million dollars.
So, um, but the, those arms are going to be going in and.
They're, they're going in as we speak and they'll go live for April.
What's that?
The pay stations.
Pay stations in Washington garage. Um, now we have another, no, there's ongoing repairs in Washington garage. A lot of new poles, we'll have to get up there and get them for one more.
Yes.
So, I mean, there's not five hundred poles holding up anymore. I mean, the biggest section we've repaired. Um, when you get stair repair, I mean, we wanted to put, this is how things work for me. George says, well, we really need new thresholds on the elevator. I said, well, call up Tyson Brum, have him come and give us an estimate. All right, they showed up. They red-tacked the elevator. Now I need special on that. So that's the way it goes, okay? Parking garage is forty years old. It hasn't been up.
Mike, how much longer could you, could you retire? I mean, come on.
Wait, so by April first, we're going to have to pay to use the parking garage, right? By April first, we have to pay to use that parking garage, correct?
Yes.
If we can do some sort of notice, because I can already hear the downtown frantic of.
People know it's coming. I mean, I bulldozed both pools. I put in New Islands and now there's machines. Anybody that parks in that garage knows it's coming.
We just said.
If you're a monthly parker, you'll have to pass.
Right, so you already paid for it no matter what.
And can they contact the city then to get that, that just tell people like business owners and everybody?
No, they all were paying. They just, they just never had somebody banning that.
Who signed it?
This one, they'll actually just be able to scan their pass to go to the garage.
And so that's, that's, that's it on the garages.
Well, you also got to remember that we budgeted like over three hundred thousand for parking garages. And how much did we get this year and last year? Because we haven't had anybody in the booth.
Nobody was working there.
We've had very little. I mean, the people that have actually paid, have been honest and paid their monthlys, we have that money, but compared to what we normally bring in, it's nothing. I mean, you know, the, um, the motel kind of gave us some trouble and we're working through it.
And as part of that same grant, we will be paving and making parking underneath the old by-bags where underneath the North Utica Bridge.
Yeah.
We will be paving it.
Yeah, that's, that's nice.
Yeah.
And especially opened up for, for coffee and bags, you know, all that, all those people.
Uh, on to page forty-six, infrastructure. This is where we see, um, the line for stormwater. Um, I got a question. I don't remember who it was from, um, and asked why it requested eight fifty-nine, why are you only putting two fifty there? Was your, okay, um, eight fifty-nine, so both Dave and Mike love to own certain cost centers together. I get one number from Mike. Mike put a question mark to that number. Dave put eight fifty-nine, which is a number that is there this year. But why is that number so high this current year? It's because we got like six hundred, seven hundred grand from FEMA from the Halloween storm. That finally came in. That's why that number jumped up, the movement spending. Um, we don't, and, and, and just as a reminder, this two fifty is not the two fifty that's also, um, restricted for stormwater. So theoretically, you could spend up to five hundred, but we're only, we're putting in two hundred and fifty there. Right now, um, Stephanie's been doing a great job. We got, we received a couple of planning grants. Um, and so she's working on projects. I don't know if they're going to be ready for this summer.
She, there's, there's a couple of projects.
Well, there's co, not those two though. Those, those two are big. Yeah, there's Willow, there's small projects in North Utica.
There's one on Buchanan or the.
One on, on Lane.
Yeah, but not big projects, so. Um, so I don't know if you have any questions. I don't know if you have any questions on the infrastructure.
After eight years.
Well, you know, good things come at those equities, aren't they? Yes. You get a lot more with sugar.
Any, any questions on the infrastructure? Okay, so I'd like to turn to page seventy-seven. This is our paving program. And I want to go through, um, I know you might have heard this at nausea. So last summer.
You said seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
So last summer, because we didn't do five million dollars in paving the year before, um, we received the ARPA money. It was the mayor's thought process that we would do as much paving as we possibly could to make up for the summer before that we didn't do as much. What we found, and Mike can expand on this, is that we don't have the capacity to do more than five million. That is why your road sat the way that they did. We couldn't, the timing of everything, we couldn't do it.
So, so that's another question that I asked. Why don't you split your paving contracts? It's, I mean, to, to me, that would make more sense. I understand.
Give me the, give me the perfect example.
Like you can't have the city split up totally.
Right now, it's our downtime. We do our planning.
Right.
But once, I have limited staff, so as soon as the contract goes out, it starts two weeks later. As soon as the insurances come in, they start. So then the person that puts out the paving bid is then in the field. So.
No, I get the point. So you use it, take.
I don't have anybody else to create another bid.
But like take five million dollars and then give two and a half to somebody, two and a half to somebody else. That way you're not waiting all that time to get those projects.
Five hundred thousand gets divided up. First of all, you have to take the salaries out. I know you don't want to hear that, but it's a trick. Salaries come out. So then you also have to do repairs because there's, there's so many streets I can save by just doing a simple repair here and there.
Oh, I know you, I know you split, I know you split your actual paving contract.
So we do split it up.
Right, right.
And then, I mean, typically, it should be three pieces of paving. It should be a rebuild of the street.
Total reconstruction.
Total reconstruction.
Melon fill.
A melon fill, that's the bolted, and then your repairs contract. So, but it just really comes down to staffing.
And I will say, there's one thing about this too, and I know that we talked about paving sidewalks and stuff like that. Like when we wrote the legislation, we specifically wrote it to pave streets only, like no curbs, no sidewalks, nothing like that. So I, that was just something that just, I kind of wanted to be.
It's unrealistic though, Councilor.
I, I get that, I get that.
Like a mandated, you know, fix the corners. I still have, you know, probably two thousand, three thousand corners.
No, I, I'm totally, I'm totally, I'm, I understand that, but I'm just saying like maybe in addition, not, not do sidewalks. Just stick with the actual four corners of the actual.
No, you know, I mean, in a perfect world, we get all the handicap corners done, then maybe Urban can help us with doing sidewalks in the inner city, whatever the target area is. You know, because they won't be spending that extra money.
Right.
So, but, you know, we have to get through this firsthand aid first, because they've also changed the regulations on handicap corners. So some of the stuff that we did under Tony years ago doesn't need it. I got to go back and fix it.
Yeah.
You know, which I'm ignoring because as far as I'm concerned, a handicap assessment will deserve certain treatment. So until I get the rest of them done, I'm not going to worry about those.
You know what I want? I want like a little ramp, so like.
So, so what I wanted, what I wanted to point out on page seventy-seven is that you'll see, because I, I, I got a question from a councilperson about this too. Why, why are the numbers so odd under the mayor proposed? Oh, and I should have, it may have improved. Um, we, we, it appears we're going to be receiving the chips, the, the early winter recovery money, the paid New York money, the touring money. And now the governor has also appropriated a billion dollars for pothole repairs. We don't know what that means. And the cost runs have not come out from D O T yet. It'll be another couple of weeks. So the goal we have at the moment is to fill those buckets. If there's state money, so say if there's another million dollars that comes in under state funding, we'll completely get rid of C D B G and we'll reduce the ARPA money so that we can use it in another year, right? So the goal is to use the state money first, but I, we just don't know the numbers yet.
But do we want to do, I mean, we really should stick away from just filling potholes. I mean, especially if we get a chunk of change like that, it's just pointless.
Historically, we don't use that money for potholes. We don't know the parameters of the state program. It says a million dollars for potholes. Doesn't that mean reconstruction? It could. I, it's a brand-new program and we haven't seen the.
I hope that, I hope that.
At the very least, it should be a proper repair.
I hope that we would actually make a plea, especially knowing that we've put together a seventy-five million dollar paving program inside the city. I mean, that would just totally screw everything up to just keep filling potholes.
Just make sure you get the New York State touring money. Yeah. If we get it, then we'll finish.
Rock Haven Road, is that on your list?
I have, I have nothing in writing there.
Rock, hey, Michael, Mike, he's got a hundred of them.
Rock Haven Road, is that?
I, I have.
I just got a hall up that.
We have, Austin has a hundred streets drawn. I don't know.
How many streets do we have? How many streets have we paved so far? So, I mean, we've done what, fifteen a year? So we've had to at least pave almost close to a hundred miles of roads.
Well, first of all, I don't do whole streets. The reality is I do pieces of streets.
Right.
You know, I mean, we did choose, we did two different paving programs. We did different parts of Chang Street. You know, I mean, that's the reality, you know? We can't do it. So it's broken up. We do the worst parts, you know, so it's like, you know, I'm just using Cornell as an example because it's really easy. You got the sixteen hundred blocks. We've done some of the sixteen hundred blocks. We've done some of the fifteen hundred blocks. And that's the way you work. You just kind of work through it.
Well, I mean, they also have the brick showing on the roads.
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean? I mean, those, some of those streets had to be done because it was a little ridiculous.
No, no, or, and it's, you know, it's a very old section of the city.
So, so, I mean, what if, what if you say you could keep that two million in there and then say whatever money we give, put it up to six million? Then you could maybe even chop off a couple more roads out of the hundred.
If, if he finds a road or two that's easy to get in there and get it done, that's not going to overtax. Last year, everyone, everyone in the council complained, and rightfully so. Roads weren't done, roads weren't paved. We were terr, we were terrified.
I was afraid we were going to finish.
We weren't going to be able to plow because those, those sewer, those sewer caps were so much higher. It would kill someone.
It was right on the night.
It would kill someone if that cap came off by plow. So this year we put some, we, we, Mike went out and did some research. The city of Rome, they put a caveat in their contracts.
That's the language that Joe was referring to. We're changing the language on it. So then once you open a street, you have six weeks to complete it. It's either six or something.
Well, I know that they were behind on people too and stuff like that, and that's, and that, I mean, that.
Well, I mean, then two years ago, I had a different company and they were just horrible to deal with, and, you know, we're lucky we completed that here.
Now, this best failure contract that we cast, I mean, are you still planning on sticking with the lowest bidder? If that's who you choose to be or?
Well, I mean, for paving, it clearly, it clearly excludes A R, because it's public work contract.
You're right. Has this, has this paving program crippled the city's budget? I want, how many years? Five years strong? Ooh. Ten more years to go, ten more years to go, ten more years to go.
Well, you say, it's a crippled budget, so when we used that money, we didn't have money to buy new ones.
That's true. That's true. But you know.
Now it's different.
Now we had two years of COVID and we have ARPA and every year is different.
I mean, because the mayor could, I need freaking luck here. I mean, that guy, he's sick. I mean, God, karma's got to get him at one point or another.
We'll let you tell him now, okay? We're going to leave it alone.
I'm all set.
We have to work on the second floor.
No more?
Is any other?
Any other questions regarding the budget?
One more budget question.
Oh.
Is it true that Mike Finelli was the best sign to be in the city?
There had to be one dig at the end. Boy, I'm glad she's back, nobody else. We'll meet again on the ninth, correct?
Yes, yes, I'm excited.
Thanks, everybody.
Judge, how are you?
Judge, how are you?
Perfect. He's good.
Meeting as soon as possible.
Which is fine. I'm just trying to get the.
Michael, are we on?
The ready answer the quickest.
Yeah.
Okay, legislation to be discussed in the pre-caucus conference dated March second. The first piece of legislation, counsel, we're going to discuss is the Board of Estimate Apportionment. It was a transfer of one thousand five, oh, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I know that one of our colleagues sit on the, uh, for a V and A. Would you like to give us a quick summary of this?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so the money, so this is for a foreclosure prevention program and, uh, the commissioner, Commissioner Thomas found another source of revenue for this out of the Attorney General's office. So we are using that grant money instead so that freed up this hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the ARPA. And so the administration wants to move it over to Anita Swan.
Very good.
Stephen Swan.
For pet control?
For pet control, for their spay and neuter program.
For, for.
Yeah, for feral cats, for sp, spay and neuter. And I believe that, um, Anita is going to be here tonight to discuss that.
Yeah, Budget Doctor, you have anything to add?
Yes, so it's, I, I think, uh, two weeks ago, I, I sent everyone the ARPA list that was allocated by the Board of V and A. Um, on that list also is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the mayor was looking to provide four hundred thousand dollars over the next couple of years for spaying and during, uh, animals, city-owned animals that come from the city. Um, she is going to be present, uh, at seven o'clock, um, because Councilman Beatrice and Councilman Williamson had some concerns about the feral cats and wanted to be sure that those cats would also be spayed and neutered. Um, that's all I have to say about that.
Heather, go ahead.
My thing is, I, I would like to hear that before voting on it because, um, I, I don't, I don't want to just give a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we don't know that the, yeah, that they're gonna even do what they say they will, so.
So wait until the discussion tonight and we'll go from there. How's that? Okay. Um, so far, we'll decide after the discussion if this legislation is going to be passed or held. Our next piece of legislation is another board of estimate transfer. The transfer is for forty-two thousand dollars. Once again, I'm gonna yield the table to our colleague, Councilwoman Celestran, Councilwoman Celestran.
Uh, so this is a, this is pretty self-explanatory. Increased, um, uh, increased gas and oil prices have led to this. We've had some other E and A resolutions exactly like this.
Okay, is there any other addition?
Does that seem fair enough, Ms. Hepburn?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Heather? Are we good? Any questions on this piece of legislation? All right, we'll move this legislation into a, into a vote. Our next piece of legislation is a proposed ordinance for a transfer for the, um, budget. Um, it is sponsored by Councilwoman Friend. Councilwoman Friend, you have the floor. You'd like to, uh, summarize, summarize this transfer.
So with all these ordinances, I am just asking to put them into committee. Um, I just, uh, as a general matter, think that we need to, um, in an inflationary year, um, we need to tick up, um, city services a little bit. The city's growing. Uh, there is more call for services. It takes more to adequately service our residents, et cetera. And so I have six ordinances. I just want to put them into committee. Uh, I'm sure that we'll have to, you know, sort of hash them out together. Uh, but those next six ordinances are all budget amendments.
Very good. Is there any questions in moving three through eight into committee?
And by the way, I do have to ask for a waiver of the Thursday rule on these.
Okay, we can ask for that during the, uh, regular scheduled meeting. Um, I'm sorry, Ms., uh, Council.
To these in the, in the next budget meeting because I would have liked to discuss these amendments in tandem with the budget while they were here, so.
We can call a committee of the whole because it's going in there and Councilman DeBrengo could, uh, schedule one at five o'clock, maybe our next council meeting, if it's okay?
I think, because we, we do codes next, did we already do code? Let me just say.
No, codes is next week.
Our next count, our next council meeting, we also have a budget meeting. No, we don't. It's the ninth.
Right.
But we do have, we do have a committee meeting as a whole on the ninth. That is the second week of the month. I guess we have that scheduled at four thirty. So what I want to do is ask everybody, I could do it later on, uh, if we could have the meeting after we go through the budget. So through the budget at four thirty, if we get done five thirty, six o'clock, we'll have our committee, committee meeting then so we can discuss.
You actually need to call a special council meeting because these are ordinances.
If you want, if you want, we could do that as well.
You're gonna have to schedule a special council meeting, introduce the ordinances, then to call a committee meeting and then.
She is incorrect about that.
What's that?
She is absolutely incorrect about that.
Frank, you have to make it, that's your legislation.
I know, and I know how the procedures are. Would you like to go further?
Uh, Chair, Chair, may I have the floor for just one second?
Sure you can.
Thank you. Um, if the amendments are not introduced, it just means that at the actual final meeting, they'll have to have unanimous approval for those amendments to be made.
Correct.
But I am hoping.
They're going to.
So I would just call a special meeting and introduce the legislation and then have a council.
Councilwoman, let me clarify. These piece of legislation she just told you about to go into committee, all you need is five votes to move it after that. Okay?
But you have to introduce them on the floor.
And all you need is five votes because they're ordinances.
So what I was saying is if anybody else has any other budget amendments that they would like to do.
They have to be introduced at a special meeting.
Then you should have a special council meeting. Right. So how is I wrong with it, Frank? I was just making the process a little more easier for everybody.
Uh, I thought you were talking about these.
No, no. I was talking about any, any other amendments. No, I was not talking about those.
We're all set. They're going in committee. Let's move on to the next piece. Ordinance number nine.
So I also need to ask for a waiver of the Thursday rule for this. Um, I am happy to put this into committee, um, but if there were enough support, I'm also happy to try to pass it tonight. Of course, we would need nine votes in order to pass it tonight. So I don't know where people are at in terms of whether.
I won't pass this now or never, so we might as well put it in committee.
Okay.
Okay, we'll refer that to committee. Very good. And our next piece, I think it's number ten. This is a normal, uh, process and procedure. Sorry, I missed it, our last council meeting. Um, this is calling for a public hearing. This is an ordinance. Um, is everybody aboard on calling for a public hearing, March sixteenth, for our city budget? Anybody opposed?
No.
Very good. We can vote on this on our next, uh, regular meeting. Um, our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Classwell-Tessa. Um, it's concerning allocating funds in established business district application to support. Councilwoman Tess, you have the floor. You'd like to explain this.
Sure, thank you. So this is, this is just a resolution and I actually have, um, a couple people that I have, that were interested in coming in and doing a presentation to just explain how a business directory, uh, could be beneficial to the residents of the city and helping and support businesses throughout the area. Um, it kind of gives a little laundry list of things that, um, could be added to the business directory act and, you know, like I said, promoting, um, not only the city but the businesses inside it. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to put this in committee on the floor.
Okay, well, move it to committee. I think that was our last piece. Is that my correct?
There was one, no.
Which one?
Yeah, we, you scripted it.
And now it's my chairperson, vice chairperson.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was, that was the one that.
Mary.
I know, I couldn't say it outside of the power down. Okay, council members, we do have, um, of course, our colleague is not entertaining, uh, the committee of the whole anymore, but we do have to set up a chair and a vice chair for it. Um, I do recommend Councilman DeBrengo for the chairman and the vice chair, Councilwoman Aiello. Um, hoping that, uh, at the time of the legislation, we have, uh, the majority of support to move it forward. Is there any discussions?
Yes, um, I think the, uh, second in charge should be, uh, I think we should split it. I think it should be either, uh, one of my colleagues, I would say Mark Williamson, since he's the senior guy, I think he should be the second in charge. That way there, we have a Republican and a Democrat. And, uh, go with that from there. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, is there any other questions? Frank, Councilman DeBrengo.
I would make a comment. Whoever wants to volunteer, I'm gonna vote for. So if everybody, I don't care who it is, at least I'll need an assistant to help me out a little bit and, um, so whoever it is, it doesn't matter.
If, if Mark does not want it, I would volunteer to help you.
I'll give it to Joe.
We can all volunteer, too.
I'll give it to Joe.
Chairman, may I have the floor for just a second?
Um, Katie, I think you were next. You want to say something or?
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, if people are concerned that nobody wants it, I am honored to take the seat too and volunteer if you will.
Thank you, Councilwoman Aiello. Uh, Mr. President, you have the floor.
Like many of the other appointments on the floor, Joe, this pertains to what you were saying too, on the floor, uh, once this is, uh, moved and seconded, um, anyone on the floor can make a motion to, uh, suggest these people. So it's not like a decision you're deciding right now. So if someone makes a motion that, uh, councilperson Aiello is the vice chair, uh, before that's approved, someone else can also make a motion for, uh, for that as well. It just depends on how the motions will be processed. That's how the decision's gonna be made. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll go back to the old way since nobody wants to do it this way.
Right, that's what I thought we were gonna do.
I like doing it this way.
I, I do have a plan and what I wanted to do was, um, basically, uh, if I do have a vice chairperson, whoever it may be, uh, maybe we could, uh, assign personnel, each councilperson, a, a committee as well, and just, just to, to run the, the committee of the whole meeting, whatever its subject might be. I know that Mark was very knowledgeable in the parks, so if we had legislation for parks, I would, I would request that Mark would run the meeting, more knowledgeable than I am. I'll handle maybe public safety. So I may come out with a list. I do have the old list here somewhere, uh, from two years ago, so, but I'm gonna make that suggestion to everybody once we have our committee meeting.
So, so if we, if we plan on doing that, which I think is a great idea, why do we need to have a code? Check committee of the whole?
Well, uh, here's, here's the issue we had last and I, and I thought, you know, okay, we have a piece of legislation, we put it in committee. Nobody took responsibility for it at times. We never, we just put it in committee of the whole. We never assigned it to actual, an actual person. So if you, if you want to do that and assign it to an actual person, they would be responsible to set up the date and time. But are we gonna keep the same timeframe as the second Wednesday and the third Wednesday for our meetings at four thirty?
Yeah.
That's another discussion we should have as well. So I think we should wait. Let's, let's wait till our next meeting or whoever we choose and then we'll, we'll hack it out then. That's, that's my opinion.
So you're, so you're saying put it in committee and then we'll have a meeting and talk about it?
No, I'm saying if you want to vote for it tonight and then when we have our next meeting, we could vote what our rules will be and if you want to change the times, we could change the time. But I don't, what I don't want, I like, I like having set times and I like having that third week open, you know, if you do have a business and you, you try to, you know, uh, work around things. So, um.
I don't think we even need to change.
I would like to, I would like to do that, um, but when I do. I would like to, I would like to do that, um, but when I do start the meeting, I, I want to assign somebody to whatever piece of legislation ever, that's gonna be.
Right.
In front of us. So if everybody doesn't mind, that's what I want to do, but let's, let's get everybody to agree on it, so let's do that.
You know, we never get to talk about committees this much prior to the actual committee system meeting, you know?
So.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's my opinion, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman DeBrengo. Is there any, anything else?
I think we should raise another floor.
Okay, we'll close the pre-caucus meeting and we can relax for a little while.
Wait.
Thank you very much. Did you need something else, Councilman?
No, I don't need anything, but it's a lot of time to relax, and y'all put a lot into committee, just a recommendation. You got, you got close to forty minutes.
There's no point to discuss it, they're just gonna pull out what they want anyways, and that's the way it's going.
No, but I'm just saying you got forty minutes, you got a few amendments here, if you could knock them out.
Why don't we have this discussion on how, how we're gonna operate?
No.
But you don't have legislation.
Listen, I would like to go over the legislation in the committee of the whole right now. We have, what, ten items in here right now? I'd like to go through one by one, while we have the time, and see if we could, if we could handle a couple of these issues that are in front of us.
Just hang on just one second, are we still live, Tony? Okay, all right, so he didn't close the feed. If you want to unadjourn the meeting, you're good.
I'll make a motion to unadjourn.
Yeah.
I guess we'll, uh, unadjourn the meeting, but Councilwoman Celeste, you've got the floor, you have a question?
I just want, very briefly, I just want to let people know that this coming Monday, March seventh, at about noon, uh, Tesla is delivering a Model Y to the parking lot here. Um, and if any council members would like to come and give it a test drive, you're more than welcome to. So Henrietta Tesla out of, um, Henrietta, New York is bringing us a Tesla, the mayor, the chief, of others are going to test drive it, and anybody else who wants to come on over, come on down.
Thank you very much for that, uh, report.
Yeah, Model Y.
Um, okay, uh, let's see, well, this is in committee, so, um.
Sure, I'll go ahead, I'll start. So proposed resolution number one. Um, we actually passed a resolution, um, stating that we were going to establish a flood mitigation task force, and the people that we actually forwarded the legislation to, um, had contacted me and stated that they would be willing and ready to jump on board to help the city in any way they can, um, if the flood minis, flood mitigation task force was going to be established. Um, I talked to some people in the county, and they have a boatload of knowledge in this, and they said that they don't see, um, any harm and nothing but benefits to actually establishing this flood mitigation task force. And whenever this does get adopted, um, they would be the first persons ready to sign up and jump on, onto the committee. So, um, I did talk to Council, um, Council President Galemy, and he had, uh, suggested a couple of amendments, which I have no problem as long as this thing goes forward, um, making those amendments, which I, I know that some of the concerns that were brought up by, um, certain council people, I think that this, um, his amendments would, would make this flow a little better. So I'll let you go and add on to that.
Okay. Oh, you don't have to talk about that now?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought we were gonna wait, okay.
Do you have?
I, I actually don't have the amendments with me right now, because I didn't know we were gonna do it right now, but, um.
I didn't know we were either, so.
Well, we, that's fine, I wrote them down at the last meeting. Um, I could pull them so that we could deal, deal with it another day, but basically, here's what it did. Uh, during our last meeting, there was a concern that we'd be meeting too much, um, and, uh, that was the first amendment. I can't remember exactly which section it was now, but instead of meeting monthly, um, the actual task force would only meet, uh, by requirement twice a year, and then after any major flooding event as defined by FEMA. The second thing was, instead of having, um, eighteen people on the, you know, up to eighteen people, it, the, the committee would actually be, um, or the task force would be reduced so that it was specific people, I think it was five, the way I wrote it down, within the city, and then each bordering municipality, um, was not going to sit on the committee and have to be bound by those meetings, but it would be the city's task force, uh, responsibility, if it was established, to identify a point of contact that the city could work with in each of those municipalities. So basically, it would, it would take this from more of a chore-type, uh, task force where it's monthly, and there's all these people, and you gotta have these giant meetings, so that it's on demand, and it creates really, um, a rolodex of contacts so that we could work with those people. I apologize, I don't have, I didn't know we were gonna do this right now, so I didn't have the suggestions. I was just gonna give them to, uh, Sam to make it a committee meeting, but basically, it was just gonna address all the concerns, make it a very agile task force that would not burden the engineering department, really. That's, that's the key there.
So would it be easier for you to completely write another?
So it'd be easier for you to completely rewrite the legislation over again, Michael?
No, 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 it was just, it was some amendments. It just identified, I had, I went through a map and listed the, um, I had listed all the.
According to what you're saying, you got about five or six points in there, you gotta have to rewrite it.
Well, we've, we've actually amended the committee of the whole system seventeen times, so.
Samantha, I'm addressing Michael.
Yeah, no, that's fine, all right, so.
Make amendments on the floor.
I had the amendments written down, I think they might be in my mailbox, so I can go look, but, um, I brought them home that evening. Basically, it, I just wanted to describe them in general, so that everyone understood what she was talking about, uh, but it, it really just took all the burden away and all the concern, and made it so that it was a standing, uh, task force that could be.
More of a communication sheet.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so why don't you, uh, forward those amendments to us, we can produce them and then we can go from there.
You know, in worst-case scenario, we don't have to do it tonight.
If you have them tonight, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get the amendments, I'll make a motion for that. Thanks.
I'm gonna wanna talk about it a little bit more than that, though.
We'll call a committee meeting, you'll be the chairperson.
I think when I look at this, like the flood mitigation, I'm glad you addressed, like, overwhelming the engineer department. I think that was my biggest concern when they sat here and addressed that, but also, I, I, the measurables seem vague for the conversations that will be happening. And I, I don't know, I just want to put it out there, and then you can address it and, like, fill me in more on.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The measurables of this task force seem very vague. Like, how are we gonna measure if it's actually working or productive?
I mean, how do you know anything that's gonna work or not until you actually do the flood mitigation task force?
And then I guess I'll go back to the part of, it doesn't seem like the system is broken at this point.
Honestly, how about we try it out? And we'll see if it's broken or not.
I just want measurables, is all I'm saying, and I think that's a fair thing to ask.
If you forward me your measurables and what you're looking for.
Councilwoman, please address it, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if anybody else in the room, I, I want to work together on this, but I just, I like things that we can go back to and prove that it's either working or not, so we're not wasting our time and everybody's work on this. And I'm not saying it's going to, but it doesn't hurt.
I think we all have time two, two times a year, and I don't, I don't think it's gonna hurt anybody to have a list of contacts, who I will contact in Deerfield, who Celeste would contact in New Hartford, who, uh, anybody, I mean, it's not really gonna hurt any.
I think it's a weird standard of government to have.
Hold on, hold on, one person at a time, Katie's got the floor.
I think it's a weird standard of government that if it's just not going to hurt, so why not? We should just kind of.
Well, you're saying that it's.
Councilwoman Katie's got the floor, please.
So just remember that.
I'm. Thank you. So yes, I think it's a weird standard of government to, if it's not efficient use of time, and it's not against anybody on that, but willing to talk about more variables. I don't want to have meetings just because, and I think our engineering department's done a great job since the Halloween flood. We've seen significant improvement across the span. I don't think we're at, I don't think anybody's confused about where the problems are. I think the more effort we can put into letting them address those problems, the better, but that's where I was standing on it. Thank you.
Hold on a second, Councilman, you've got the floor now?
I will agree with you a hundred percent, that the administration has done everything. They've, they've, we have us, I'm still waiting for our next meeting to take care of what we've met on, but all I'm trying to say is, it's a little extra, it's not gonna hurt. That's, that's my take.
You all set, Councilman?
Yep, thank you.
I just, I would, it would never be appropriate for me to call somebody in New Hartford. That would only really be appropriate for, what? Excuse me?
Councilman, she's got the floor, sir, thank you.
It wouldn't be appropriate for me to call a, a government official in the administration of New Hartford, because I'm in the legislative branch, and that's the administration's job. And I would expect that if I did that, if I went over the head of the administration and called people in neighboring municipalities, I, I more or less expect that people in the administration would be really unhappy with me. It's an inappropriate, it's, it's an inappropriate division of labor in terms of separation of powers. I, I talk to people all the time, you're right, I do call people all the time, Joe. I don't call other administrations as a member of the common council.
Council.
So. So getting back to what, what I'm saying is, if you did this, you wouldn't be calling anybody that wasn't appropriate, because you'd have people on a committee that you had a, a point of contact. Nobody says that that person is gonna be an elected official from New Hartford. It could be a person from North Utica, it could be Ron Vincent, for example, and the person in New Hartford could be Heather, acting as a citizen in New Hartford. So it wouldn't be inappropriate. Do we need this? It could, in my point of view, it could go either way. Not gonna hurt anything. I have major problems in North Utica. Administration spent more money than any, they've done more than anybody has done, but you know what? I'm not gonna tell the people, the people who elected me with their, that we could have something and I can have a, you know, be a little extra. I'm gonna tell them no, for what reason? That's how my point on it. Do we need it? I'm not really sure if we need it, but I'm not gonna say, no, we don't.
All set, Councilwoman Beatrice?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, President Galemy, you got the floor.
I just, I just want to make a comment. If the council passes legislation to create a task force within the city, then it's not just the council calling that. We would be passing law to create a task force would not, which would now be part of the administrative side to execute said law. It wouldn't be some kind of overstep between legis, you know, the legislative branches and the administrative branches, et cetera. The whole point of creating the task force by ordinance, um, would, would do just that. That's simply put. It, it's not just some random legislative branch thing calling administrations. And furthermore, the points of contact may not be part of an administration, it could be DPW. It could be, you know, I mean, it's not just administration. So I just wanted to put that out there. If the council passes law, it's now the admin, it's the executive, uh, branch that executes that. And I believe that is specified part, in part in the legislation, because it's an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance. It's a resolution.
You had an ordinance heard of.
This is a resolution, which is my problem with it, um, not, I'm not even gonna talk about the, the aspects of it, if it's needed and all, that I hear that argument. But my, my issue was, if the mayor is gonna fight against it, it, it's, I, I see his buy-in as necessary. If he's not gonna do it, then we pass this, you know what I mean, and it's still.
Not worth the pay per spend.
I, I don't think that, I don't think the mayor would be in opposition of it to be.
To end, what I was gonna say on the floor, though, is if.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Just real, no, just real quick. If, if the council decides, the majority of the council, right? Let's say it's a five-four vote, right? If the council decides to pass anything, um, that is how upstairs and downstairs works together sometimes. Um, if right now, we're getting the idea that the mayor doesn't want to do this, but then five people in the council decide that this is a good idea, then the mayor may acquiesce at some point and, and go back and forth. It's, I'm just saying that it's this body that sets the laws for the city, and it's the administrative and the executive branch that executes them.
Let them veto it.
Yes.
Let them veto it.
And it, and if five people decide that's the case, it's five people decide that's the case, the majority of this council's what controls this council.
I can tell you, Council. Uh, Mr. President, you're all set?
Yeah, I'm done.
Would you like the floor?
Yeah, yeah, I would, thank you.
And, and I could, and I could tell you that, I mean, I was on the council for eight years, and I might not have the best relationship with Mayor Paul Marion, but I could tell you for a hundred percent fact that this, if, if this were to go through, he would not veto the legislation.
And to me, knowing that the resolution that we've actually sent out to other people, that they've already started and responded and said that they were more than willing and ready to help, um, to me, that's already a step in the right direction. And I think that we do have to, have to open up the door in order to get the county and everybody in, in a room and, you know, more frequent conversation, so on and so forth, to actually get this flood task force actually established, so, um, yeah, that's it.
That being said, though, Sam, we are doing that. We've had, we've had him, we've had him there, we have a lot going, that's, that's what I'm saying for this, and I support you on this.
And I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, but here's the difference.
I'll support you on this as a communication sheet and.
One council member at a time, please.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate that, and I know, and I know that you have, and you also gotta remember that I was a councilperson in your district for eight years, so I understand a lot of the issues, and I think that it might be hard for people that don't have a district that had to deal with constant flooding issues, the actual importance of this task force from different parts of the city. And with that said, yes, there has been a lot of things done, but your meetings that you have with the mayor are private. This just gives an open streamlined meeting to actually see what's going on. I mean, that's, that's it, and that's kind of what I was always looking for with this task force, and like I said, we established it, the council, when I left, they didn't do anything with it. Here I am again, got a year and a half to try and figure it out.
So one last question. So if you were included in those meetings, or the whole council was included in those meetings, you would be happy with that?
No, I still would like this.
Okay.
Okay, um, Councilman, uh, President Galemy, you do have the amendments. Um, could you possibly forward them to the judge so we can find?
Well, I'm, I gotta go see if I can find them. This isn't the last meeting I wrote them down, if they're in the mailbox or their home, you know, I mean.
Maybe we can move on, once you have those amendments in front of us.
I'll just work with Sam.
And bring it to the judge and make sure those amendments are legal.
Absolutely.
And we'll go from there, all right? Uh, our next piece of legislation is in committee of the whole, ordinance number nine, amending the composition of police. Um, I'm assuming because, uh, we did change it, the one in committee could be discharged. Are there any questions with that?
I still kinda want to keep this in committee. I would. Because we've, technically, we haven't transferred that money into those budget lines, um, for the five, for the five, for five positions, so, I mean, technically.
Well, you have twelve on yours, don't you?
No.
This one has twelve.
This one has twelve, yes. So we can discharge this one.
Just until that gets done, I'd rather keep it.
Increasing parks department, that's our next piece, resolution number eleven. Um, I don't think we have the jurisdiction to do this.
No, that's why it was a resolution requesting the mayor.
Okay, we can go.
I say we thoughtful.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. I agree.
Okay, are you discharging it?
Yep.
Okay.
Creative inclusive playgrounds.
This we could discharge.
Okay.
Discharge, correct.
Yep.
Registration and posting of owner and manager info and designation of agent.
Sure, and this is something that we're gonna have to have a further discussion on with the codes department, just with the budget and everything. It was kind of a, you know, difficult time to try and discuss this legislation. Um, this is actually something that several other municipalities around the city have actually done, and they found some quite success with this. It's basically anybody that doesn't live inside the city and we have a difficult time getting ahold of, that's, um, owner of a, of a building and, um, a multi-dwelling unit. Um, what this does is it posts for, and I'm not gonna get into it because it's, it's a much more detailed than that, but they have to post a designated agent, um, with that lives with inside the, like, a parameter of the city, um, if there was something that happened to the, um, say apartment that somebody lived in, um, that they had to respond to that. And they would have had to register that person with the city, um, so on and so forth, so, go ahead, Frank.
Uh, it's Joey, you have the floor.
Well, I'm actually the chairman, so I could talk when I want, right?
No.
You can talk anytime.
No, I, you know, it's not a bad idea, but I still think we should leave it in committee. I think we have to get the department heads to see who's gonna be the lead agency on this, whether it's gonna be the fire department, public works, police department, codes, zoning, who's gonna be in charge, you know, posting and, 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 and all that good stuff. So I think we have to get a lead agency.
Well, it's all, it's actually.
Whether, whether it be codes, I don't know if you want to take this task on, but, um, I think it's open for discussion with the department heads to see where they stand on it. That's just my opinion.
It's actually our city.
Thank you, Councilman DeBrengo. The next person to speak is Councilwoman Celeste Friend.
I just, I would have a very small, um, suggestion for how we could improve this. Could we also add into this that buildings are required to have the, their physical address be very prominently placed? So, you know, if it's number eleven, twelve, French Row, that it's just, that would just be a suggestion for an amendment. I know that recently I was at a North Utica Neighborhood Association meeting, and Scott Ingersoll was talking about the fact that fire departments sometimes literally can't figure out the house because the, the street number is not clear on the house. That would just be a very small amendment I'd like to make to this law.
Thank you, Councilwoman Celeste Friend. Council, uh, Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I just, on this, I just want to make sure I understand what you're talking about. So you're basically saying a guy owns a building that doesn't live around here, you want a point of contact of somebody that lives in the building, so if something happens, that's who we call.
The majority of the times, like, if you go into, like, an apartment building, okay, and there's nobody there, you can't get ahold of anybody.
The owner probably lives in New York or something like, okay.
Yeah, this will actually have a posting, so say if somebody goes in, whether it's code, police, fire, they'll actually go in, and the designated contact will be, like, in the hallway, you know, the contact, so on and so forth.
You should have a local designated manager.
Not, right.
Are you guys, are you guys addressing the vacant building legislation?
No.
Okay, okay.
This is the, this is the, um, this is local law entitled registration and posting of owner and management information is designated.
So this is just basically for commercial property?
That's why I was asking.
The section five?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, it is. But I understand what she was, I was under, I understand what she was saying. But I understand what she was, I was, I understand what she was saying. She was saying just make sure that that's an outside structure, which would have to be more of the zoning code conformant, that they had to post that on that, yeah. So this one's basically inside, when you walk in, whether it's a four-story apartment, three-story. And, and if you, the, the way the legislation was written, and actually the Village of Hurcomer, um, I worked with them on this years ago, um, in regards to this, and basically our city clerk is a point of contact, okay? So they go in, they register with the city clerk, they pay a fee, um, and then they go and they post it inside. So there's a whole process this is actually has to go through, um, and that's why, I mean, it obviously has to do with codes, fire, police, um, so on and so forth. But basically what it was is just to give them a, a posting and a notice of who their management person is, if they don't live within thirty-five miles of the city.
And it's basically just commercial property?
No, it's about, it's, it's...
Multi-dwelling.
Multi-dwelling units, like any multiple apartments, things like that, you know? It's basically those people that don't live inside the city, that we've been having a hard time...
So if you own a two-family house and you live in the first floor, you don't have to do nothing about it?
No, because you're there. Only if you don't live in the building, only if you don't live within thirty-five miles of the city.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, uh, so, so I, um, and me and, uh, uh, Councilwoman Colosmo Testa has talked about this previously in past year. But, um, this was more so, when I was gonna write it, was more so for absentee landlords alone. I do like it better that it is for owner of a building and not just landlords. Um, there's a few amendments that I would have, particularly I would like to put into this ordinance, the, uh, registration and fee structure for the owner, I think we could just put it in here, also would make it a little bit more than thirty-five miles, cause I think if someone lives in Syracuse, um, I'm cool, if a person lives in Syracuse and was the, was the, um, contact person, I'm okay with that. I think that's just a little bit more than thirty-five miles. And the other thing too, that I would wanna change, or amendment would be, um, the B part of section five, a two or three-family house, and the owner of the building resides in the building, such notice need not be posted. I think that if it is a two-family home, um, and the person does not reside in the building, I think I would still want them to post the contact person. Like if a person was absentee, owned multiple properties, I don't think that they would then have to post, right?
Only if they didn't live within the thirty-five miles of the city. Like, does that make sense? So like, say I own...
So it's absentee, right?
Yeah, and it, when the original legislation was written, it was written absentee landlord legislation. And it, it kinda really wasn't the right title for this, because that's really not what you're, what you're basically, you're not trying to hamper on people that don't live inside, you know, that, not all people that live outside the city are absentee landlords. This is just more for a responsive, uh...
Right.
Say there was a, the fire department needed to go in for something, there was nobody there, you gotta contact it, you know? It takes a long time to try and find out where somebody lives sometimes, you know what I mean? So, basically that was it, just to have somebody designated that didn't live inside the city. Like if they lived in New York City, for example, you know? Just to have somebody designated inside.
I think now it would, so yeah, those two, I see now it's for exemption, so my train of thought was off on section five. But it would be, my two would be to increase the mileage to, um, whatever Syracuse is, that radius, and would be to put in here the, um, fee structure, so that way the co, um, the clerk doesn't have to think about what that would be, um, to register the person. Or if there is a fee to register the person, so just to do that.
Give us a hundred dollars to register, or fifty dollars or whatever.
I believe, when I wrote the legislation, there was an initial fee. It was if they didn't register, then there was a penalty. But we could put a fee schedule on there too.
If we want, I'll just...
Very good suggestion, Councilman. Are there any other, uh, questions, or I guess we'll continue to amend this piece of legislation in committee then?
Yep.
Okay. Our next piece of legislation, ordinance amending composition of the borough of the fire department. I'm pretty sure we're waiting for the safer grant on that, we can keep that in committee.
I, can I have the floor on this?
Yes.
So I talked to a couple people with Schumer's office, and I'm not in...
Whoa, 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 but, this the fire department?
Yes, yes.
This the one that was vetoed?
No.
No.
This is from the law department.
This is the one that came down from the law department.
When?
At the time of the resolution.
January twenty-sixth.
You passed, could you pass it?
Twenty-eighth.
No.
Did you fire pass the fire department law?
No, there was a resolution. A second resolution.
Yes.
This is for the fire department?
Yes.
It is.
And, and your honor was remaining in committee. Sidebar, thank you.
No, so, okay, so, and Heather, do you, and I, I don't know if you know, do you have any idea where they are in the process of the actual application? I know it's been submitted, but have you heard anything from, um...
The only thing I heard back, um, was that they're actually maybe moving up the timeline, so we may hear something remains. No, it's...
Okay, so, and that's another thing too, so we do have, we do have...
We hear something last, in May versus August.
Okay.
We're remaining in committee then.
So, so I did, I did talk to Schumer's office, and they, they told me that they've reached out to Chief Ingersoll a couple of times, and they said they wanna, you know, get talking with them. They said this ordinance does nothing but strengthen the application. So, so to me, I would see no harm, no foul in actually presenting this, because the way the law department wrote it, it reverses back if the safer grant doesn't get approved. So it's just one more step into helping strengthen the application of that. I was actually gonna pull it out of committee, um, at the last council meeting, but the, the council meeting actually ended a little quicker than I thought. Um, so I have an intent to pull this out of committee tonight.
Okay, let's move to the next piece of legislation, resolution in support of replacement of all lead service lines.
I think that this, this legislation would be a little easier for everybody to pass if we didn't talk, if, if the, the monetary amount of fifteen million dollars, um, was in there. I think that if we're, we're passing this resolution, um, just making an amendment to that line and taking out the monetary amount, um, and, and then just submitting it to the mayor. So that, that would be just my recommendation if the council were to pull it out. Um, I think that the, the person that did put the effort into this, um, you know, submitted petitions, submitted a whole bunch of things, I don't see the problem of passing that if the, if the monetary amount was an actual concern.
Okay, is there any other discussions on that?
I, I have a separate concern. I mean, given the presentations that we got last week from Caroline Williams and, help me out, Christine, Christine Lennon. I have a real problem with us passing a resolution encouraging the city to do something about lead service lines, when we know that lead service lines are not, that there's a much larger lead problem in our city, which is the lead, interior lead paint. Is much more of an issue in terms of lead poisoning in our children. So, I, you know, that's, I don't know. I send, it somehow sends a, a really weird message. We're gonna pass a resolution about lead service lines, which might be a problem, which are a problem, but are a smaller problem than something that is really serious, and the, the interior paint lead is a much bigger problem.
Councilwoman Beatrice, you have the floor.
So, um, why wouldn't we amend something to put, change the amendment, change the legislation to say, we'd like the city to look into the lead, the paint problem, and the pipe problem? Just something to look at it like that then?
Can I have the floor?
That's the problem.
Councilwoman Celeste Frand, you have the floor, babe.
I, I think that's, I agree with that. I think that we need a more general resolution encouraging the city to solve its lead problem in all the different, you know, ways in which we have lead problems. Soil, interior paint, and lead service lines. But this resolution doesn't come close to doing that.
Okay. Any others? Okay, discussion's closed on that one. Ordinance number three, establishing vacant building register. Uh, Celeste Frand, I think you have the floor on that one.
I just wanna continue to keep this. We've been busy with the budget, so I haven't tried to, um, I'd like to have a committee of the whole meeting down the road, Mr. DeBrango, about this, in which we bring in, um, department, appropriate department heads, and also, um, some people from, I think it's Albany or Schenectady, who've had really good success with this kind of a law. I'd like to bring that in down the road a little bit. So I just wanna keep this in committee, yes.
Prefer the discussion, very good.
Exactly.
Our last ordinance is the annual estimate, and of course, that needs to be in committee until after March thirty-first, or the day of March thirty-first. Uh, is there any other discussion? Okay, um, everything's closed. Can I ask for a recess? And, uh, we'll start in about, uh, five, ten minutes, like ten, uh, ten, fifteen minutes. Everybody good?
This regular meeting of the common council will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice Williamson, Klassimo Testa, DeBrango, Glemeal present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance, split the flag, and declare states equal to America. To the free public, through its rights and standards, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong rule.
Councilman Williamson, can you bring up the sheet for public comment, please? I don't think we grabbed that. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you very much. All right, the first order of business this evening is review of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President.
Do we have a second? We have a second for Miola. Any opposed to reading those minutes? Or, I'm sorry, opposed to dispensing of them? All right, the council has accepted the minutes from the previous meeting and they are posted in ECO 360 for anyone to view. We have no properties and/or legislation during the public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed. Public comment period. Ron Vincent, please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
State your name for the record, then you may begin.
My name is Ron Vincent. I sat here tonight for an hour and a half during the budget hearing. I was the only person in the crowd. I sort of compared listening to things in the budget to what Congress is going through with this Build Back America Not Better program and nobody can come to agreement on. A lot of stuff tonight, I heard, I don't have a lot of agreement on. But then again, it's a city budget, it's got to be passed. The only problem is out of the sixty-some thousand people who live in the city of Utica, ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of these people probably don't even know a darn thing about anything that's in the budget other than people in this building. But there's a couple of things I heard about tonight that I just not in agreement with and I thought I'd bring them up to you. We had somebody here tonight from the sign shop. We're talking about doing a study on Herkimer Road, New York State Route 5 in the city of Utica, because one person doesn't like the idea of the new idea with the no left-hand turns. My opinion, take the no left-hand turn signs down, take and make them bigger, four by eight footers, put them right smack dab in the middle of the road, because I've never seen in the life that I've lived in North Utica a better traffic flow than what we've got right now. But because one person has come forward and asked to have a study done, it's in the budget that we're going to have somebody do that. It just isn't right. If you go over there before school starts, there's people making left-hand turns, stopping traffic, people slamming on their brakes because they're making illegal left-hand turns. Our police department ought to take and put a patrol car in the North Utica Fire Department's parking lot and sit there. They could probably make the city a few hundred dollars a day writing tickets on these people. I've never seen anybody get a ticket on it yet. Well, I'll tell you what, if somebody makes an illegal left-hand turn in front of me, get ready, I'll hit you. Other things you hear about in the budget, parks, playgrounds, swimming pools, everything under the sun. We got the third largest, I heard tonight, Parks Department in the state of New York. I think we have the third largest amount of parks in the state of New York. Let's see, New York City's probably number one with about, what, eleven, twelve million people? Buffalo's probably number two with two or three million people. Oh, yeah, in Utica, sixty-six thousand people? Do we need all these parks on every corner of the city? Do we really need them all? Isn't there other things we can do? Another thing that was brought up was sidewalks. The money that's being allotted for sidewalks, yeah, they're in pretty bad shape. Guess what? Why should everybody in the city have to pay for sidewalks in certain areas? There's one part of this city, North Utica, that ninety-five percent of the streets don't even have sidewalks and curbs. So how about taking and dividing the money into six and investing it in something smart in North Utica, our share, because we don't have to worry about getting sidewalks done? If you want your sidewalk done, yeah, the city should have it done, the city should pay so much to do it, but let the property owner who doesn't maintain their darn sidewalks pay a higher fee for it. Let's do maybe a fifty-fifty percent. If you look at sidewalks in the wintertime, who plows them? Everybody says the city should do it. The city does enough for you people. It's your property, your responsibility, you pay to have them repaired, you pay to have them shoveled. Yeah, I don't know, that was just tonight. But I mean, if you go through the budget, who's asking for some of this crazy stuff when there's necessities that we need in this city taken care of for the taxpayers? DPW said something about the green waste pickup, that other cities don't do it, we do it. Yeah, you do it, you do it for everybody. You do it for the people that own homes, pay property taxes, and that's our benefit and we appreciate it. But then again, if you don't want to do what you have to do, they come out with a chart tells you when you can start putting the stuff out, when you have to stop putting it out. But no, we put, we take and pick up stuff two, three, four weeks after the time limit. Go around to these people, have the codes department go out there and write tickets for every one of these people that are throwing stuff in the roads after the time limit. Recoup some of our money and invest it in stuff that we need for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay McFarland. The common council has provided you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
State your name and you may begin.
Jay McFarland, can we hear around on this? That's too high. I've been out here for the last two and a half years, have not had little problems with myself, so that's why I haven't been able to come to these meetings. But now I've got full strength, my doctor has hopefully got me recovered and so I can go up there. But tonight, I am going to say something that is positive and that everybody's going to be surprised at. During the summertime, I was up at the top of the morning and I lost my wallet. The gentleman came in, found me, and wouldn't take any money. He returned it all, then he finally came into the place looking for me and he gave it to me. I put it in the paper, nobody even responded to it, so it was good things. Now, last, now this week, I was up at the top of the morning, I have nothing else to do but go to breakfast, and we were sitting there and the gentleman, we were ready to leave, and he grabbed my check. I says, "What the heck are you doing?" He says, "I'm going to pay your bills." This is a complete stranger. I mean, there's good people here in Utica at the top of the morning, where Joe was there, that, and I don't know who he is and I still don't, I says, "I don't know you." He says, "You don't have to," he says, "but I'm picking," he just took my check and said, "I got it," and then we left. So we do have some good people here in Utica to, just to show you that we, you know, I've never had anybody pick up a check, I usually pick the check up, but this is why it really, it's amazing that we're finding the people are smiling again and we get to even talk. So hopefully everybody will be good to me and the codes is after me now, but we're going to get that all stringed out, so. They've told me and I said, "Okay," so I gone to the front of the judge and I've got, but I try and get things done, but with the tenants right now, it's quite hard to work with tenants, so. They're the worst tenants I've had in forty-three years that I've had, that I've been doing business, so. But there are good people and I just wanted to say, you know, we just, you can't find a wallet and return it with everything in it and don't want any money and they didn't take any cash? Wow. So, thank heaven you did it, because that's all the work, you know, to give all that thing to replace, so. But that's the good things I can say tonight, so enjoy and peace and love.
Next person this evening, Hamza Sinani, please come forward. Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
State your name for the record, you may begin.
Hamza Sinani. And I just want to say, I'm the speaker over here, you know, there really is a better feeling around the city, a feeling of optimism, there are a lot more people talking, there's a lot more socializing going on, and you know, this is a, this city has a lot of blessings. This is a really beautiful place. And I just wanted to congratulate you guys on announcing that you're going to allow Ukrainian refugees here. I was very, you know, I thought that was really nice, because they're feeling it out there. And this whole situation, you know, we don't know what next month is going to be or what's going to be next week, actually, you know, these times are so crazy. So I think it's time, just an idea, to prepare for the future, because gas prices have always been going up, there's always been some form of inflation. You know, I always thought maybe it would be a good idea to put like a people mover, an electrical rail for like one mile, you could sell it as like a tourism shtick type thing and just put it there for one mile. It'll probably fail, but I guarantee you in a year or two, you'll add it, you'll add on another couple miles, because the way this, I don't see a bright future. I was on the internet and I'm from former Yugoslavia and I'm close to these politics and this is going to be a real dogfight out there. And they're going to start knocking out gas lines and I think gas is going to go up even more. So let's just start putting ideas, let's make ideas for right now, so in the future things won't hurt so bad, you know? And, you know, that's about it. And I wish you guys the best and solidarity to Ukraine and to all the, you know, people out there who are going through it. And another thing that's bothering me is this government officials, talk show hosts, news people, congressmen. news people, congresspeople, this fixation with the dictator that's invaded a country and is putting people, changing lives, you know, it's, I can't tell you how hard it is when this happens, you understand? But you should know about it, because he did the same in Iraq and Afghanistan. So it leaves us in this horrible situation where we can't say anything. But it's still bad, and I don't know what's, who's, what exactly is going on, but it doesn't feel right. The news doesn't feel right, Congressman Stefanik, I would like to have a debate with, but there's a lot of issues going on, and I want people to understand that when we pledge allegiance, we pledge allegiance to the American flag, not the Russian flag. And these people need help, and it's important that we all stay unified in this horrible aggression by a dictator with nuclear weapons, you know? And I'm really proud of this city, and, you know, there's going to be more blessings. The more you keep doing this, from the Afghan refugees, the Ukrainian refugees, you're introducing more families, you introduce, the people here will keep trying, will keep trying our best to make this a better place, you know? And that's about it. Thank you, Utica.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Anita Vitulow, the last speaker, actually. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Convention Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name, you may begin.
Okay, my name is Anita Vitulow, I'm here representing Anita Stevens Swan Humane Society this evening. And primarily, I am here to thank you all. Last November, I came before this body, and I gave a proposal for American Rescue Plan Act funding. And from this session, I moved on and met with Mayor and Heather Mowat, and Brian Thomas, and did the same presentation, and we were notified that we have been awarded some funding. So we owe you a debt of gratitude. These are your City of Utica animals we take care of, we don't get any state or federal recurring funding. A hundred and eleven years, this nonprofit organization has survived solely on your community's love for animals, donations, we work very hard every day to bring in money, we give our own money. I'm in the middle of a campaign right now, and we have everybody rising to the occasion. Let me tell you, this community is passionate about our city animals, and I have backing from banks and corporations, and I've really tapped into the business community that I'm connected to, and it's no one party that can, that can take care of thousands of animals every year from your streets. So it has to be a partnership, and we are in partnership with you. So the City of Utica is mandated by agricultural markets law to provide care for stray animals, but the City of Utica doesn't have a shelter of its own, some cities do. And really, without the Stevens Swan Humane Society servicing your municipal contract, I don't know what you would do with these animals. You would have to build at great cost to the taxpayers, you'd have to build your own shelter, you're talking about air filtration systems and drainage, very expensive. I just partnered in building one down in Cooperstown, it's a quarter of our size, and it was $5 million. So you'd have to build your own shelter, you'd have to staff it, manage it, insure it, it's a very expensive proposition, it's a lot of liability. So we do that for you, and we like doing it for you, because we want to take care of the City of Utica animals. But it is a partnership, and you all rose to the occasion when there was extra funding to be had through the American Rescue Plan Act funding program. I came and asked on behalf of the board, and you rose to the occasion, and you gave us some extra funding. So for that, I thank you very, very much. The mayor, Heather Mowat, was instrumental in helping me, thank you Heather, so much. And that's all I came for. Now, in addition to that, Heather asked me to hit on a few points regarding your stray and feral cat problem, and you do have a massive problem in the City of Utica, because that population has been unchecked with no spay and neuter services to speak of. We do what we can at the shelter, but we don't have the bandwidth. There are cities that I have visited, Scotia, Buffalo, two in Albany, and there's, I presented that last November, too, there's high-volume, low-cost spay-neuter centers. The only way to reduce your stray cat population over time is you have to spay and neuter, otherwise, the population just continues to grow. Once you spay and neuter, a large percent of that population, their lifespan living on the streets is only two to three years. So as they die off through natural causes, or some are friendly enough that we can adopt them out, but if you manage the population, it will eventually get in check. If you do nothing about the population, all that will happen is what's your, the situation you're living in now. Your streets are overrun with stray and feral cats, your constituents are complaining, it's a nuisance, it's a health hazard, and for those of us that care about the animals, it's not compassionate. We're a humane community, so we have to take care of all of our residents, animal and human, we're responsible for them. So I sent out this email, and I know some of you have some questions, and I'm here to answer what I can for you.
Mr. President, would you like to waive the move order and change the process?
If you'd like to make that motion.
Is there questions to be asked, Anita, on the feral cat situation?
Is there a, well, is there a second to the motion to allow the council to interact with, or seconds to bring, go any opposed, since this is the last speaker, and it's pertinent to the city business that's on the docket this evening? Any opposed? Okay, please request the floor.
May I have the floor?
Yes.
Okay, Anita, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
And I'm going to support this transfer tonight.
Thank you.
For the simple reason of what you do for dogs and other animals, and I think your organization is great, but I just want to be on record here, so everybody can listen to me, and I've had the biggest problem out of anybody, it comes to me all the time. I'm reading your facts, there are about 725 stray and feral cats, sprayed, neutered, and adopted. I have to tell you, Anita, all year long, anybody who went to the Humane Society to bring a cat there, we're told that we don't take in feral cats. You don't have to respond, you know?
Okay.
And so I just want this to be on record now, that we're coming to, and you came to us in November, telling us that you guys couldn't take stray and neutered cats, and you had a whole plan, and you wanted us to go with an extra, I don't even, I don't have, my, it was like, you wanted us to build another building, you wanted us to hire two vets, it would have been close to two or three million dollars. Am I correct, or am I off?
Uh, yeah, uh, it depends on the building, what we'd have to build, and what we'd have to do, but, vets.
So that you were telling us in November, that that's what we needed to solve the feral cat problem. We come up with an extra money here, now you're telling me, I'm only reading what it says, in 725 stray and feral cats sprayed, neutered, and adopted, which I have to tell you, I don't believe there was one done, because anybody that called me would tell me that they won't have nothing to do with that. Now, now you're saying you're, 2022, you've already did 92 feral owned cats were sprayed and neutered. The only thing I'm asking right now, and I'm on record saying it, that anybody who brings a cat there, and they're turned away, I'm going to, I'm going to come back to you, is that fair enough?
Right, yes, absolutely, but I will tell you this, we cannot handle your whole problem.
I'm not saying handle the whole problem, you're telling me there.
You're, you're going to have cats that aren't spayed and neutered, and...
I understand that, but you're telling me here, that 725 were sprayed and neutered, and you're telling me 92 were done in the last two months?
Councilman Beatrice, in the interest of time and respect for the speaker, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm asking, is there anybody comes there, and they call me, and I just want to be able to call you.
It's Joe, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
Joe, Joe is right, in the sense that we are not taking care of your whole problem, we can't. You have thousands of stray and feral cats, you need a program just for that. I wish we could, because I hate those cats on the street suffering. They're not wild animals, they don't have immune systems of wild animals, a respiratory infection takes them out, an eye infection takes them out, they get hit by cars, they get attacked by other animals. We don't want them on the streets, but the Humane Society struggles every day just to take care of the flood, and I say flood, of animals that comes into that shelter, from, mostly from central city Utica. And it, the municipal contract, New York State Animal Protection Federation, out of Albany, I asked Libby Post, the executive director, how many shelters in New York State take municipal contracts? I support 50 animal and rescue shelters through a philanthropic fund that I have, and most of them don't take municipal contracts because you operated a loss. And Libby said that, you know, very few take them because the loss is typically 30%. We always chose to service the City of Utica contract, because our city doesn't have the facility to do it, because we care about the animals. Now, that essentially bankrupted us, last December, we had $350,000 in the bank, that's about three months of operating costs, because COVID hit, and we lost almost a million dollars in fundraising over a few years. So our reserves were all eaten up, we at one time had $2 million in reserves, but every year, we run at, you know, between a $300,000 and $500,000 deficit, so you eat that up pretty quickly. Our budget's about 1.3 million a year, we take in approximately 2,000 animals a year. But we can service the city contract, and we do that very adequately, but we can't take all of your stray and feral cats off the street, we don't have, we don't have the vets to do it, we don't have the room to do it, we don't have the staff to do it. With the funding we have, as I say, we struggle every day to raise money, so I don't know how we would take care of all your feral cat problem. There's nothing that's going to take care of your feral cat problem overnight, because it's a valve overnight. But if you don't start spaying and neutering the population, it's only going to continue to do what it's been doing, and that's grow.
Thank you.
You're saying you're going to spay and neuter them, right?
Councilman Beatrice.
Yeah.
To a certain number, I think, what she's saying is within their budgetary allowance, they will do that. Is there any other questions from the floor for Ms. Vitulow? You may have the floor, Councilman.
Thank you again for all the information. I do want to follow up with what Councilman Beatrice is saying. Is this, is this $150,000 transfer, is, is the request, not the request, is this money going to go to help your operating costs currently, or is it going to be allocated to expand your capability with our feral cat problem?
Well, what we did was, two years ago, I funded a grant from New York State Animal Capital Grant, and we expanded and remodeled our facility, and one area we did was the medical area. So now we have two, we have an expanded operatory with two stations, and we, we got the grant, but we also had to kick in, you know, you have to do a partial mansion, we raised that money, and we did it. So in expanding that medical area with more capacity, now that leads to, you need vets to do the surgeries. So with that $150,000, we were able to plan and add veterinarians, we can get vets now four days out of five a week. So that's what it's really going to pay for. We spend about $200,000 a year on veterinarians, spay and neuter, regular medical costs, and oh, by the way, when your City of Utica cats come in, before they're released or adopted, besides spaying and neutering, we give them their full vaccinations, because you don't want them back on the streets with rabies or distemper, so we also vaccinate, so they get full medical care. We don't euthanize animals only for reasons of beyond medical help as deemed by veterinarian or dangerous to people, aggressive behaviors that can't be retrained.
Okay, so would you, would you say that this 725 is your capacity?
No, because last year, we weren't at the, didn't have the double operatories and more veterinary care, so that will grow. I did add that last caveat, a remodeled medical suite and additional veterinarian contracted services will allow a higher volume of spay-neuter services in 2022, but it's not going to solve your problem. Wish we could. However, I'm willing to work with you if you want to get into a spay-neuter program, high-volume, low-cost, I'm very willing to work with you on that and help raise money for it, and build a partnership doing that with you.
Is that all? Thank you. Councilperson Fred?
Thank you. So I just want to be really clear on sort of the mechanism of this. So our animal control officer brings some cats to you, assuming that you're still within the capacity of what you can, you spay and neuter them, plus give them rabies, treat them in whatever ways they need, and if they're not in that very low category of needing to be euthanized because they're beyond hope or in pain, et cetera, then, then what happens to them? Then would they get returned to where they were, they were caught originally?
Well, it depends. There are two categories of cats. Everybody categories, categorizes cats that live on the street as feral. Feral means a wild animal. They're not all born in the wild, and wild animals, some of them were owned pets that were just let out, never came back, or kicked out, abandoned, whatever, but some can be adopted. I mean, you know, we had 725 last year that were adopted after, nothing goes out of the shelter without being spayed, neutered, and vaccinated.
Right. So, again, I'm just trying to understand the mechanism. How do our cats, you know, the city's cats, come to you?
Well, I'll give you an example. So people call me with cat problems. So we had a whole colony on Skyler Street. So we have other groups we work with, one is for pet's sake, and she really coordinates the stray feral cat. So I tell, Chris Wilson is her name, like me, she's a volunteer, works a regular job, runs this rescue program on the side, and there are a few others that she deals with. And she went over to Skyler Street, she has to have permission from the homeowner, she sets the humane traps, we trap them, bring them into the Humane Society, and spay, neuter them, vaccinate them, if they're friendly enough and can be handled by staff and adoptable, we keep them and adopt them out. If they're not, they're returned to where they were picked up.
Okay. Does that sometimes mean returning them to somebody's private property?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the homeowner that agrees to let us on the property to trap them has to agree to that.
Has to agree to take them back after you've spayed, neutered, treated them?
Oh, yeah, they're fully aware, we're bringing them back, but at least they know they're not going to multiply. I'm on a case now off in East Utica, where their whole yard, they started taking care of a few cats, and now a year later, their whole yard is filled with cats. So now we're taking, luckily, they're friendly, so we'll get them in and spay, neuter them. We've got about 225 of your cats right now at the shelter up for adoption. So whatever color, pattern, breed, size, age you might like, if you're in the market for a cat, please come and see us. We have a hundred, about 100 of your dogs and 225 of your cats.
Thank you very much for...
You're welcome.
...clearing that up for me.
Does anyone have anything else this evening? Okay, Anita, thank you very much.
Mr. President, common council members, we really appreciate your support and the work you do for our city, and especially for our animals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes Public Convention Period. We have no guests this evening, although Ms. Vitulow, you were a very nice guest, thank you. We do have communications from the mayor. This is a mayor's message to the common council, March 2nd, 2022. And the mayor's words, "Last month, the administration unveiled Phase 3 of the Utica Prosperity Initiative, which consisted of funding through the ARPA. As part of Phase 3, 1.2 million has been reserved for the council, the council has the ability to set the rules and guidelines as to how the funds are allocated. The only requirement is that the allocation of funds must meet federal guidelines as determined by law and the accounting firm the city has utilized to ensure eligibility." The administration has submitted one legislative item for the council's consideration regarding ARPA, a transfer of funds to support Stevens Swan Humane Society, which we were just discussing. "The city has received at-home COVID test kits from Oneida County, and will be working with local nonprofits and community-based organizations to help distribute the tests to our residents. Test kit is in each council member's mailbox. The city will continue to provide winter activities for families and kids available by Ellis, certain activities are weather-dependent. Programs will be operational on Thursdays and Fridays from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the month of March. On Tuesday, March 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Higbee Road will be one-lane traffic as New York, Susquehanna, and Western Railway is scheduled to perform maintenance on the railway crossing. The administration has been in constant communication with NYSW, and I, this is the mayor's words, I will provide the council with any updated information as it is learned." That concludes the mayor's message this evening. That concludes the mayor's message this evening. Reports from the city officers. Corporation Council, Stephanie DiGiorgio, you have anything this evening?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Lieutenant Ashley Berger, FD. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Phillips?
Nothing to report. I'd just like to encourage people to become plumbers.
Actually might contemplate it.
Yeah.
Definitely be making more than I am now.
We got, you know, it's, there's a poultry shortage of licensed plumbers in the city. You're required to have a licensed plumber do plumbing work and people are having trouble finding plumbers. We're going to look at phases in the future and I'll come back to the council to try to make it easier to get your plumbing license. But with all these good projects coming on and, you know, a lot of the companies aren't doing the smaller jobs because they're tied into the new construction. I think really active, we only have seven to nine licensed plumbers in the entire city. And now with the, all the drainage problems that are going on because of the freeze thaws that keep happening, it's a problem. So we got to find a way to encourage our children to get into trades.
All right. Thank you very much. Bert Parham, Assistant Chief Noon.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes the reports from city officers. We have no cash reports this evening. Petitions, Proposals, and Appeals, First District, Councilmember Katie Aiello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure everyone has been following the recent unrest in Ukraine, so my thoughts and prayers are with them. We had a beautiful, well, the flag is raised at three-quarters staff in honor of them. And I want to remind everybody that the Ukrainian church at Six Cottage Place, their first fundraiser starts this Friday at 10:00 a.m. for provies and cabbage rolls, so you can support them. And the proceeds go to people in Ukraine. And that will be every Friday until July. So we also, along with speaking of flags, we had, I think, three other flag raisings this week for the Dominican Republic, the Bosnian flag, and the Welsh. So if anybody else wants to honor their Independence Day and here it is, you can contact the city clerk's office to request a flag raising. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robert Burmaster, Second District, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third District, Councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I said this earlier in the committee meeting, but I just want to repeat. If any department heads or any council members would like to test drive a Tesla, we're going to have a Tesla Model Y delivered to us from a dealership outside of Rochester Monday at noon. So come and take it for a spin. Thank you.
Thank you. I expect to see in your disclosure report that you're a Tesla salesperson. No kidding.
Good thing it's late. Now I know that I need to put that in, right?
Yeah. All right, thank you. Is that all this evening?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember and Majority Leader Frank Meoli at the floor. Fourth district, sorry, fourth district.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilmember Delvin Moody.
Thank you, Mr. President. Black History Month has just concluded and I think it is Women History Month now. So I certainly wanted to make a note of the historic nomination of Judge Katanji Brown Jackson, the first African-American woman to be nominated to the Supreme Court. It was an historic moment just to have that visualization a few days ago. Also too, as you said in the mayor's message, the 200,000 per district is an amazing thing. I think it is a step to actually see how individual council people can actually further kind of be visible and to have the discretionary funds to be able to do things in their district, not through the executive branch per se, but through the legislative branch and have the ability to do things that they see fit. So that's an exciting opportunity for the council and I look forward to seeing how the projects shake out all across the city. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilmember Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-at-Large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson.
I have nothing to pass, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman-at-Large Samantha Claus-Motesta.
I'm all set this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-at-Large Frank, oh, and President Prote, sorry.
Thank you.
Frank Brango.
Thank you. I just have one thing. There is a council member's birthday today. I just want to acknowledge Councilman Beatrice. Happy birthday, Councilman Beatrice.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of the evening. That is all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have something to say, actually. It's regarding some legislation. This is just something that obviously I can't direct, but I do have something that I would like to appeal. There's legislation in committee for a flood mitigation task force. Regardless of what the body decides to do with that, the reason I wanted to speak to it is I'm basically making an appeal for the council to get in a room outside of our caucus and the main meeting and hash it out one way or the other with the councilwoman who sponsored that legislation. Now, if that is not the case, you know, the process of how this council has functioned for years did change over the past couple of years. And that's just matter of fact. It's not a critique. It's a matter of fact. The way we run right now is we have a committee of the whole system. Legislation that is to be proposed has to be presented at the pre-meeting conference. And if it's even going to make it into committee, it has to be put into committee even by the majority. That's how we chose to run things. So what I'm asking is that this council decides to do one thing or the other. Either meet on it, hash it out, figure out if there's something you'd like to come together on and move forward with, or this majority has to make a decision to dispense with the legislation. Because what we have right now is somebody who's in the minority of the council proposing something and it's just sitting there. And there is a request to have it heard, even if at a committee meeting it gets hashed out and then you figure out what to do with it. Furthermore, if this council decides to pass any law for that matter, whether it's by resolution, local law, ordinance, and I've heard Judge Garamone through my years sitting on the council say this many times, it's always best if the council passes good law, sound law, reviewed by corporation council, if it, you know, passes the muster test, as Judge Garamone always says. But I've seen councils pass good law, and I'm not just talking about City of Utica. I've seen legislative bodies pass really messy law. But it's this body's job to either pass the resolutions that take effect within your council or if they have administrative effect, pass ordinances and local laws that have a permanent effect within the city. And I'm just asking the council to come together, meet on that legislation, and actually hash it out in a committee meeting and work through it. And if you don't want to deal with it, get rid of it because that's how we have to function. Otherwise, it's just going to keep sitting there. Thank you. All right. That's all I have. All right, so clerk, could you please read Proposed Resolution Number One for the council?
Mr. President, could I make a motion that we waive the Thursday rule for all the legislation tonight? For that need to?
Yes.
Make the motion?
We may. We have a second from, I'm going to go with Meola, Ms. Quigges. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? All right, we can move through the pieces. Thank you.
From the Board of E&amp;A for the 2021 to 2022 fiscal year resolution, it's resolved that the city controllers hereby authorize and direct it to make the following transfer of funds from ARPA foreclosure prevention counseling, $150,000 to the ARPA Anita Stevens Swan Population Control.
Who's the second on that?
Second.
All right. Your votes. What's that?
Can I qualify my vote?
Yes, you may.
So I am going to support this. And like I said to Mrs. Batula, I think that's a great organization. However, I do want to make a point and I want anybody who has a problem, if they bring a cat to their shelter and are turned away, just let me know so I can follow back up on it. I know for the last two and a half years, we've gone through a lot of problems where, you know, stuff, you know, these cats weren't taken in, they were considered wild animals. And I'm reading legislation in here that says all this, these numbers that were taken care of. So I'm going to take her at her word. They do a great job, like I said before, even if it didn't have anything to do with cats, they deserve the money just for what they do for everything else. But just please follow up with me so I can follow up with Mrs. Batula on any complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Resolution Number Two. Oh, yeah, it says resolution. It's an ordinance.
They're not resolutions.
They're ordinance. Sorry.
There are ordinances on the papers.
Yes.
We pass them as an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Every time you do anything like that, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Mr. President, can you ask for a motion?
Yeah, I don't know why they say resolve today. So can we?
We're actually supposed to read.
Be it ordained. Yeah, yeah.
Let's just re-vote on that one.
Let's go back to. Please make a motion to reconsider Resolution Number One. Second. Any opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to amend the resolution to ordinance.
So the motion to amend, I will read instead, strike resolved and replace with be it ordained.
It should always be ordained by the common council of city.
It always does.
Yeah, if you do it at the beginning, sometimes you do it at the end.
All right, so second on the amendment from Councilwoman Meola. Friend is the second. Any opposed? Thank you. Your votes.
Nineties amended.
All right. Before we move on quote, Resolution Number Two, can someone please make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to change the word resolved into ordained and move the resolution to ordinance form.
Okay, any opposed? Your votes.
Oh, that's mine.
No, it makes sense. Different other vote on it?
Nineties adopted.
Good call, Your Honor.
Thank you. We figured out the procedural issue that caused that and solved. Yeah. Okay. Proposed ordinance number three, sponsored by Councilmember Friend, ordinance to amend E&amp;A approved annual estimate. The ordinance is to add $45,000 to the building codes line. Is there a motion moved? Moving it? Okay. Is there a?
I'm sorry, I just want to commit this.
All right. Motion to commit.
She wants to refer to committee.
Yes, perfect. All right. Second. Any opposed? Okay. Proposed ordinance number three is in committee. I'll move through these, clerk. Proposed ordinance number four, sponsored by Councilmember Friend.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Thank you very much. Second. Any opposed? Okay. Ordinance number four, which adds $90,000 to the city codes salaries line, is committed. Proposed ordinance number five has to do with fire administration. It's another amendment to the budget.
I'd like to make a motion to commit, please.
Second from Meola. Any opposed? Okay. That is a repairs line increase of 50,000 placed in committee. Proposed ordinance number six. Councilperson Friend?
I'd like to make a motion to commit this.
Okay. Second from Meola. It has to do with engineering line salaries, adding $20,000. That has been placed in committee. Proposed ordinance number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to commit, please.
Thank you very much. And that is another amendment to our annual estimate to deal with infrastructure, contractual stormwater, adding $50,000 to that line. Second from Meola. Any opposed? That's been committed. Proposed ordinance number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Sounds good. We have a second. Okay, that one is DPW Central Garage wages at $40,000. Any opposed? Okay, that's been placed in committee. All right, we have.
I'd like to make a motion to commit this as well, Mr. President.
Thank you. So Councilperson Friend has made a motion to commit ordinance number nine, which is an ordinance adding a new Article Four to Chapter 217, nuisances entitled Article Four Firearms Shooting Ranges. I'll just summarize this. This legislation, which is available in ECO 360 for the public to read, outlines a regulation and fee program for shooting ranges within the city limits. We have a second to place that in committee. Is anyone opposed to placing this in committee? Same committee. Nope. Hang on, it's a long one. I got to get through the pages here.
Number 10, number 10.
All right. Ordinance number 10. Clerk, why don't you read this one?
I'd like to call for a vote.
Calling for a public hearing regarding the annual estimate for the 2022-2023 budget. Order that on Wednesday, March 16 of 2022, the common council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers for such persons that wish to be heard in reference to the annual estimate of the City of Utica for 2022-2023 fiscal year, which was submitted to the common council on or before February 20, 2022, by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment pursuant to Section 7.001 of the City Charter and the 40th year Community Development Block Grant Program from the 2022-2023 fiscal year, on file in the Office of the City Clerk for examination until such hearing. For such persons that would like to participate remotely in the public hearing, please sign up to speak by emailing thecityclerk@cityclerk@citybutica.com with your full name and phone number no later than 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 16, 2022, commencing at 7:00 p.m. on that day. Participants will be dialed in to speak based on the chronological order in which they reached out to the clerk to participate. Further, order that the city clerk is hereby directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published in the official newspaper three times prior to said meeting of the common council.
We have a second from Meola. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. We have one more piece this evening. Resolution Number 11. You all, and we have, we have stuff to commit to. I'll call a word. Two more pieces tonight.
11 and 12, Mr. President.
I have 11. Oh, 12, yeah, it wasn't added to my packet, sorry.
I'll make a motion to put Resolution Number 11 in committee.
All right. Resolution Number 11, resolution requesting each district councilperson allocate funding to establish a business directory to help support and revitalize the business of Utica. Is there a second? We have a second from DeBrango to place this in committee. Any opposed? Thank you. Before we move on to the last piece, just a procedural note. From now on, if a piece is sponsored by one person, as the chair, I'm going to recognize that as the motion to move that. And we'll only do the second. That's if there's one person as the sponsor. And then we'll just be able to move through. It'll make things less confusing when we're committing. I'm just saying that's how I'm going to proceed with it. If it's sponsored by somebody, they're the motion that I'm going to call for.
And, Mr. President, the opposite too. Don't forget, if the sponsors pull, the legislation is then a moot point.
Well, yes, of course. Yeah. This has been committed. Resolution Number 12.
I'd like to make a motion on second to put it in committee.
Resolution 12.
I'd like to call for a vote, Mr. President.
All right, so we're going to call for, can I say that for a second? A vote on Resolution 12. I'm going to read this. Sponsored by Meola and Williamson, Majority Leader and Minority Leader, acknowledgment of chairperson and vice-chairperson of the committee of the whole for the Common Council of Utica 2022-2023. Be it resolved that the common council of the City of Utica, New York acknowledges to be filled and as chairperson and to be filled as vice-chairperson of the committee of the whole for the ensuing two years.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this, Mr. President.
I'll actually process the motion to amend prior to the motion to commit. Okay? So what's your motion?
I'd like to amend this, that the first fill-in be Councilman DeBrango and in the second empty line be Councilwoman Aiello.
Is there a second? We have a second from Meola. Any opposed to that?
I oppose.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Okay. So the amendment, the amendment passes by six. And is there any other discussion or motions to amend now that that has been? This now reads, be it resolved that the common council of City of Utica, New York acknowledges Councilperson Frank DeBrango as chairperson and Councilperson Aiello, Katie Aiello as vice-chairperson of the committee of the whole for the ensuing two years if this does come to the vote.
I'd like to make a motion.
What's your motion?
To replace Katie Aiello with Councilman Beatrice.
Okay, the motion on the. Okay. The motion on the floor is to amend the currently standing piece, um, for the vice chair to read Councilperson Joe Beatrice. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, the motion has to be voted on. Uh, why don't we vote by, uh, take, I'm going to take your vote on the board. Place your votes, please.
For what?
For the, the motion to, uh, to amend to read Councilman Beatrice.
I'm going to stick to my word. Vote for everybody.
All right. Well, the vote, the, the motion has been defeated five-four. Okay. So, the legislation still reads DeBrango, Aiello.
I'd like to call for the vote, please, on this, the legislation on the floor, please, Mr. President.
My second.
All right. Your votes. Clear the board, please. Oh, hang on, hang on. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Your votes on the legislation. No, it's okay.
Six yeas adopted.
All right. Now, before we do anything else, there's something we forgot to do at the beginning of this meeting. I'd like to give the floor to the City Clerk to introduce the new deputy clerk.
This is our new deputy city clerk, Andrew Costella, and this is his second day.
Good thing he's still here.
Yeah. Meeting number one. I, as I told, I said, "Welcome to the party." That's what I told him. Yeah. All right. Anything else this evening from the floor?
Committee of the Whole, Mr. President, there's some legislation that we agreed on discharging and some legislation that's supposed to be left in committee.
All right. I'll take the motions from the floor.
I'll make a motion to discharge Ordinance Number Nine.
There's a motion to discharge Proposed Ordinance Number Nine, amend composition of police, which was committed on the fifth of January. Do we have a second? We have a second from DeBrango. Uh, any opposed to discharging this legislation? Okay. You guys got this, right? I'll just run it. All right. Cool. Thank you. Anything else from the floor?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to discharge Proposed Resolution Number Eleven.
Second from Miola. Any opposed?
Could you just tell us what that is?
Sure. It's the increase in the Parks Department. Yes, sorry.
Second.
Uh, we already got the second. Any opposed? Discharged. Anything else from the floor?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to discharge or Resolution Number Twelve.
Okay. That was creating inclusive playgrounds. Second from Miola. Any opposed? Discharged.
And then I'd like to make a motion to propose, pull Proposed Ordinance Number Two is the ordinance pending composition of barrel fire.
You're pulling that?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I mean, you've made a motion to. All right. Uh, is there a second to move that from committee to the floor?
I'll second.
We have a second from Beatrice. Uh...
I'd like to remain in committee.
All right. Well, uh, let's take the vote. Uh, take the vote on the board, please. This is a vote to bring it to the floor. So, if you vote yes, you want it to the floor for consideration. If you vote no, it stays in committee. Your votes. Uh, the, uh, fire count.
Where else is that? It's the new one, you mean, you've...
It, it's the new one that I, please call the vote.
There's no change.
Call the vote. Okay. It, it remains in committee. It remains in committee. Special Counsel Garamone would like the floor regarding this, even though it's in committee. So, I'm going to give him the floor.
Stay in committee is the 177.
Uh, one, no, that was, uh, 177 is the Police Department, but this is the Fire, 124.
124. Well, 124...
Okay, that's it.
Counsel. Hang on.
I want to say something. You've already voted to what?
Leave it in committee, Your Honor.
No, yes. It's in committee. It's just staying there.
124 is the complement, and this one, I believe, has no, uh, conditions attached to it. Is that the one?
No.
No, the one we just left in committee is the one that came down from the Law Department to introduce after the veto.
Now, that was a compromise ordinance that was submitted to Charter Brown regarding the, uh, veto and not veto process on the special meetings, I recall. Correct? And then you, uh, receive a veto message on the order, ordinance that you passed. When you got the veto message on the increasing the competent fire department, you had, uh, 20 days, uh, to act on that when you received it. You have to reconsider it in 20 days or it's dead. So, it was dead. Now, if you're going to bring another ordinance out on the Fire Department that's different than that, then it's a motion to reconsider and have it come from the minority. I mean, I mean, from the majority.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
You can't, that, that ordinance, you've already done that issue. You've followed the statute. It's dead. So, just because you put it in committee as a convenience that night doesn't re-resurrect it.
I understand.
If you read the Charter and if you read the Second Class City's law, how you act after you veto ordinance, they're a little bit different in time elements, but they say the same thing. Your period to reconsider is you have a reconsideration built into the statute, and you have 20 days under the Charter and I think 30 days under the Second Class City's law reverse. Well, those, that, those time elements have passed, so that issue is dead. So, if you want to revisit that issue, then you have somebody from the majority ask the issue, uh, put in an ordinance to reconsider, or prepare an ordinance and then ask for motion to reconsider.
Judge, thank you.
That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to discharge from committee Proposed Resolution Number Nine, uh, the resolution in support of the replacement of all lead service lines.
Uh, we have a motion and second to dis, uh, discharge Proposed Resolution Nine, committed on the second of February 2022. Your votes.
I don't have that paper. What's that one?
That is the resolution in support of the replacement of all lead service lines, private and public in Utica.
I think it's terrible. And I will say, I mean, it, here's, here's the thing. Again, a resident, a resident...
Is this a vote qualification, Councilperson? Is this a vote qualification?
Yes. A resident of the city proposed a piece of legislation to the Common Council. He actually worked with several members of this council, okay, that aren't even sponsors of this resolution. To discharge this after this guy went and got, what, how many signatures? How many petitions? And just to discharge it because you don't like the legislation anymore after you worked with them? I find it very, 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 very rude.
If I can add on that.
Are you qualifying a vote?
Yes, please.
Yes, you have the floor.
Uh, yeah. I think Richard Morris, what he did was fantastic, and his passion for the city was, it's amazing, and we need more of that. And, uh, many of us in this room have been working with him since June of this past summer, and we fully believe in the mission, but it's not against somebody who was trying to do law for the city. This is about trying to make legislation that will cover all our bases, uh, as far as what led, is doing in harming to our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Councilperson DeBrango has the floor. I'll go to you next, Councilman Beatrice.
No, I, I agree to, uh, Councilperson Clausimo, to her extent, as far as, yeah, could, could we help him? Could we make a recommendation to the mayor to, to, you know, take care of the lead plates? But, the $15 million, to commit $15 million is, is just, just too much for our city of our size to, to do this project. We, we, we need outside help. We need federal agency. We need state agencies. So, I, I'm not, I, I won't vote for it in the form that it's in now, but if there are some amendments to it, I will strongly consider voting for it. So, I just want to let you know.
All right. This is a motion and second to discharge, to sovereigns aware. So, if you approve this and it has a majority vote, this legislation will be discharged and go away. Uh, Councilman DeBrango, or, uh, Beatrice, you requested the floor.
Yes. Um, I tell you, I'm, you guys all know me pretty much. If I tell you something, I'm a man of my word. And, uh, the only reason I got involved in this is because there was three or four council members on this council that promised this man that they would move this forward, and they turned their back on him. And when I seen that he had 350 signatures or whatever he had, I elected to put it forward. However, I will tell you, because I'm not pro, I'm not afraid to say I made a mistake, I didn't read the part in the bottom of, it slipped past me the amount of the money. There's no way that the city should come up with that type of money, but we should be helping and looking forward at this problem. But, if, if I tell somebody I'm going to do something, I do it. I don't turn my back on them. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
The vote is to...
This vote is a vote to discharge. So, if you vote yes, this goes away. If you vote no, it, uh, stays in committee. Before the vote, I just wanted to clarify one thing as well about this piece of legislation, because he did come to my house, actually, as well and speak to me about this. Um, this resolution is a mere suggestion in resolution format, um, and while it does save $15 million, everyone in this room has acknowledged that $15 million is not possible to put towards this effort. Um, but, uh, in the essence of what he was asking is he still wanted to ask for that, even if he knew, uh, that no one, um, including the mayor, and this is not a negative thing, has voiced that $15 million is too much. He still wanted to put it forward that way, and that's simply why it was written the way it was written. Um, anyone else? All right. Uh, call the vote. Okay. It stays in committee.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discharge. Sorry. Sorry. I've been going since 7:00 AM. My fault. Yeah. Oh, man. All right. So, we're done. We're done. All right. Thank you. Yeah, we're adjourned.
They drafted the legislation.